Calling to order, the July, June 12th, 2017, Tiverton Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Mello?
Counsel Perry.
Present.
Counsel LeBeau.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Present.
Counsel Hilton.
Present.
Counsel Chabot.
Present.
Counsel DiMedeiras.
Present.
And Counsel Edwards.
Present.
All present.
This is brought before the council consent agenda. CA 1A, approval of special council meeting minutes, April 17th, 2017. 1B, approval of special council meeting, May 2nd, 2017. 1C, approval of special council meeting executive session minutes, May 2nd, 2017. 1D, approval of regular council meeting minutes, May 8th, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commission. Planning Board 4, Tree Commission. Council Subcommittee on Casino. Conservation Commission. And Foglin Beach Oversight Committee. CA 3, correspondents, receive and file. 3A, Representative John Edwards regarding stoplight at the intersection of Fish Road and Bogomash Road. 3B, Town of Exeter regarding opposition to H 6172 Act relating to agriculture and forestry. CA 4, approval of tax accessory abatements. CA 5, Planning Board response to Town Council request for recommendation on amendment to zoning ordinance addressing regulation of accessory structures. CA 6, Susan Gill, Planning Board Administrative Officer Activity Report for May. CA 7, Town Administrator Police and Fire Overtime Report for month of May. CA 8, Town Administrator Distribution of Monthly, Department Monthly Reports for May. CA 9, Treasurer Denise Charette, Distribution of Bond Sale Refinance and Ratings Update. CA 10, Town Clerk Request Approval of Extension of Bay Street Moratorium to December 31st, 2017. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
CA 7.
Any others? Do I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. CA 7, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Chief Lloyd, I see in the back there. Overtime for the prior month, is that number up relative to the previous months?
Yes, sir, it's up. I think, I just look for it now, I just came from a call, so I'm sorry, I don't have it with me.
No worries.
I believe it's around $10,000 this month, and the audit number goes down. We've been short, we have three, we had three people currently out on long-term illness and injury as of right now, and then two other members were also out for an extended period. We've gotten two back, we're still short three.
So Chief, is it fair to say that the driver of overtime is the number of guys being over minimum staffing, as opposed to just the number of hours for each shift?
In this case, the number of personnel on shift does make a difference with regards to overtime, because having the vacancies, we can't absorb, they're into extra leave now, so we can't absorb the extra leave as it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. DiMedeiras?
I have. Most of the vacancies occurred on shift three, and we had to move personnel, so I have people out of their positions now, trying to bring us to the highest maximum number we can on each shift, but still, with the doubling up on vacation and other leave that is available, it leaves us with vacancies we have to fill, which drives the overtime up.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve CA 7.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Open public forum for announcement, comments, and questions. I have... I have, number one on the list is Linda Lawson, Tiverton Days, July 28 through the 30th, 2017. Ms. Lawson?
I'm gonna select this seat, because I don't think that's for me.
You sure you don't want to be on the nightly news talking about Tiverton Days?
I'm positive, but this was all wonderful, thank you for having me. Just here before you, to let you all know that the Celebrate Tiverton, now Tiverton Celebrates, Tiverton Days, is coming back. So, we have a planning group that's been meeting. I have met with the Police Department, the Fire Department, as well as the Recreation Commission. I think on our new town administrator's second day, I barged in his office, introduced myself, and informed him that this was going on. It's July 28 through the 30th. We're gonna try to keep things as they were in the past. We do recognize that the beach is being worked on, and the DPW Director, we're in contact with him, for the possibility that on that July 28th, which is a Friday evening, that we may or may not be able to have the bonfire on the beach, and we may need to postpone that to the following month. The parade is scheduled to happen in the morning on Saturday, the 29th. I have been in contact with, like I said, the Police Chief, and we'll work with him on anything necessary, and we're working on a community children family event at the library that evening. So, it is a new committee, there's been some new members that have joined. We're really trying to open this out and bring more folks in to volunteer on the event, and we're hoping to have Tiverton Days and have more Tiverton Days that celebrates our community and all aspects of our community, and everyone within our community.
Are you planning on having a 5K race?
The high school has had a lot on their plate, but the 5K may not happen on that Sunday. They're looking at some things. If not, they want to have a road race, which would mean a lot more work, a lot more permits, and work with, you know, with the folks here and the Police Chief. So, there is a 5K going on in town in June, kind of competing ones the following month, but they definitely do want to have it.
Any questions from the council?
I do have a question.
Mr. LeBeau.
How are you financially? Do you get it done?
Do you have money?
I do. It just so happens.
We have, we have very little funding, and I'm incredibly concerned regarding purchasing insurance for these events.
I got 500 bucks you can have.
We've had, thank you very much.
I'm gonna give it to that lady, the treasurer lady, we have 500 extra from what I collected.
Okay.
So I need somebody to give it to, so you can have.
So you're gonna save Tiverton Days?
I'm gonna give you 500 bucks. I don't know how far it's gonna go, but I have 500.
It will, but obviously we have police detail that we need to, you know, to pay for and things like that. The biggest concern that I still have, and I'm $500 richer than I came in, so maybe I should be on the other mic. I love how that happens, but I'll come back next week.
Where should people send donations?
People, contact tivitancelebrate@gmail.com, and I will also give information here at the Town Hall if they want to contact the Town Clerk's Office. They're always great with passing those messages along to us. But, you know, the sustainability of this event, you know, is a concern. There's a lot of interested people, but, you know, coordinating it and sustaining it is, you know, is of concern.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I think that, you know, based on some of the concerns that Linda has here, that it might be worthwhile getting an agenda item and making this a town-sponsored event, so we can alleviate the insurance, because obviously this is a community event, it's not a fun, it's not a, not a, a nonprofit trying to raise money, it's not a charity thing, it's something for the community. I think this might be a good, a good, you know, use of the council to have them piggyback on the interlocal trust, similar to what we could have done with the bonfire that we were discussing prior this, early this year.
Yes, it is.
They don't, they don't really need the scoop.
Please state your name and address.
Blair Moore, at 3119 Main Road.
Sharon Moore, at 3119 Main Road.
Apologies, Madam President, we've never done this before, so...
It's okay.
Thank you for seeing us, members of the jury, is that what you call it? I, I just, I'm sure, I'm sure you've all heard by now that we're facing a pretty smelly shell issue on Main Road. We have a petition started with all of the, our neighbors and everything, that we would like to put forth to try and get a law to not be able to use unwashed clam shells with the meat still attached.
Yes, the bodies that are the problem.
Yeah, so, if you've seen all the maggots and the flies that are covering the, sorry for the graphic foot, but it's just become a health hazard, and it's just waste, and the smell is permeating, it just so happens that it's five feet from our, our individual home. We have a neighbor down the road that is actually wanting to sell her house, and they will not put it up for sale, or take anyone through it, or even list it until the smell is gone.
And that's, that's not fair to any neighbor. They should be able to sell, rent, do what they need to do, in order to live. We need to open our windows, we need to close our windows when we want to.
Yeah.
We need to sit outside when we want to.
So all the neighbors on Main Road cannot open their windows, they have influx amounts of ridiculous amounts of flies because of all the maggots, they cannot sit outside in their outdoor areas, and because we're five feet away from the actual flesh, we can't actually sit in our living room and watch television, and sit and eat in our kitchen, because it's, the smell is throughout the house.
So what we really want to put down is that we can try to get a law for the Town of Tiverton residents, that these unwashed shells with, with the bodies in them not be dumped.
Yeah.
For driveways.
For driveways.
Especially...
Because I know Evelyn's uses wash shells, I mean, we all, we're community in Tiverton, we all need to be part of this, you know, respect for our neighbors, respect for the idea that we have clean air and, you know, can use our outdoor areas. I mean, it's summer, and whoever loves this area, so. It's been 12 days now that we've been going, that we've been going through this. I know the Police Chief was amazing, and hand-delivered the cease and desist to...
So we want to thank him for that.
The Rose family, and, yeah.
That's it. That's it.
Tony, do we have any type of update?
Proceed on a criminal complaint on this basis, based upon, you know, what has happened here, the violation of the ordinance. I know it's a private nuisance, but it's also a public one too.
Yes.
The town is trying as hard as it can on this situation, and we're moving forward on this matter in District Court on a criminal complaint if the condition is not alleviated.
Yes.
After the seven days of the citation.
Can I ask you a question? What happens if this was to happen next year? Because last year it happened on the property across the way, and all the neighbors didn't know what that smell was.
Until we...
Until we approached them, and, and they were like, no wonder I had flies all inside my house and everything like that. So I'm just wondering, what happens if it is extracted at the seven days, but then this happens again next year?
How does that...
The, the, the main issue that is being discussed here, and I want to not only address you, but I think that the council has the same questions. The question is not only the violations, but also enforcement.
Yes.
And we've come to a group decision, I think, with the chief, the administrator, and the solicitor, that what we need to do is to have the wider tools, the greater tools that we would have if this were a criminal prosecution, to make sure that it's not a continuing nuisance that keeps happening down the line, and that's what we're trying to do here.
For all neighbors.
That's correct, yes.
That's correct, the whole of Tiverton, not just the Main Road issue, the whole of Tiverton.
Yes.
Good, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Solicitor, you decided that this is under an ordinance, can you just let me know what ordinance that is, that we're operating under?
I have it here.
I was just, I have them all in front of me, I was saying, if you have the number, I'll just, I just want to jot that down.
Sanitation, accumulation, sorry, all exterior property and premise shall be maintained a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. The occupant shall keep part of the exterior property which such occupies, occupies, or controls a clean and sanitary condition. Am I doing it right? Sorry, apologies. 302 exterior property, 302.1 sanitation, 308 rubbish and garbage, 308.1 accumulation of rubbish and garbage.
Okay.
It's the dead bodies.
Not, not specific to the clam shells, but it's encompassing.
Okay.
So to answer your question, there is a law.
Thank you.
And that's why we could issue a cease and desist order.
Okay.
And go through the process, as the solicitor has explained.
Okay.
Okay?
We also know that this is happening over on Crandall Road, but they haven't been able to get anything done about that one, because they, they called us, because we, you know, we started a little bit going on there. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
But anyway, so they're calling us, so it's actu, it's actually happening more in, in Tiverton, it's just not on our end. So we have to just make sure that our neighbors don't have...
Well, they should be contacting the town.
Okay.
If that's the situation.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll talk about that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Joe Souza, Trash Collection.
Right to the mic, huh, Joe?
Joe Souza, 49 Hancock Street. Well, although I've been on political vacation, I've still been attending the landfill committee meetings, and thanks to Steve, I get to watch the council meetings on my leisure, and I listen to discussion about the trash contract. And there was one situation that wasn't discussed, and that was the, how to pay for the bins. First, I thought, in my opinion, that we should go trash and recycle bins, just do the whole thing, get it over with, transfer, that way we can get the automated pickup and make the savings there, okay? There was significant savings. The thing was, I didn't hear anybody come up with the other op, mention the other option, and there wasn't another option to pay that, it was close to $600,000, and that was to take that money out of the landfill closure account. If we were to take the $600,000 out of the landfill account, then we don't have to borrow money from the trash provider at interest to pay for the bins. It would be a one-time shot, we would take the money, pay for the bins. I live right on the state line, Fall River changed over to the automated, they put the bins out, although they do it a little bit different, because they watch what's in the bins, they actually, the guy gets out of the truck and uses a tipper, they're not using the arm, similar to Middletown, which, which is what we could go to, which is actually further savings. I know it's tough to take money out of that fund, because it's for the closure, but when you look what's going on with our landfill, we have a better, seems that we have a better arrangement with the, all of a sudden, we have a better arrangement with DEM, with our landfill. It seems that our new director is able to communicate better with the, the DEM for some reason, and some of the things that we were told by the previous, I'm not gonna get into that, I'll just say that I felt like I was lied to, and it really ticked me off, but, you know, I kind of knew better anyway, I think you know what I'm talking about. The main thing is, though, I look down the street on Tiverton side on a windy day, and half of the bins have milk bottles and everything blown out, and then I look across the street at the Fall River, and that side of the street is clean, except for what blew over there from Tiverton, because they went to the bins. For years, we've had trash blowing around our streets every windy day, so, you know, it's a chance, and the dogs getting into the trash cans when people put them out at night, we've all heard all the stories. Let's do it, let's make the change, let's use the money out of the, out of landfill closure account, purchase the bins, get the cheapest account we can, the cheapest bid we can with the trash for the next three years. Let's do it, because, and, you know, I've heard a lot, oh, the old people, my neighbor across the street is 86 years old, and I see him every week, every Friday, push those bins out of his garage, up his driveway, like it's nothing. They're not really that heavy, they're on wheels, they drag real easy, and, you know, all the stories about the bins are too big and too heavy, that, people will be used to them within a matter of a month, people will get used to them, and they'll start to like it better when they don't have to walk up the street and pick up their milk cartons and things. So, let's, let's do it, let's use the landfill closure account, let's buy the bins, it's a one-time deal, we'll have enough money, and also we'll mention it, it may be that we can keep our landfill open longer than the three years, if we continue as we're going with the recycling. Just because the landfill continues, it's a big pile of trash, and we keep putting dirt on top of it, so it keeps, under its own weight, sinking down, so we've gained more space, and because our new Public Works Director is working well with our DEM, we're now gonna be able to use that extra room, we're gonna be able to go to that full altitude, so we may even get more than three years. The bags will pay. That was a good deal, getting into that bags, we all know that, although a lot of people don't like it, it's gonna, it's gonna save us a lot in the end, just in interest on the bonds. So, all right, that's it, my piece, I'm going home. Only other thing, you're gonna, the new bar, it's, it used to be Benjamin's.
Yeah.
If you're for a license today, I live right next door, and I'm totally want to say, please give them the license, they're doing a real good job cleaning the place up, and it's gonna be a clean and decent place.
Thanks, Joe.
See you later.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Ms. DiMedeiras?
Tony, the landfill account is restricted, can we take it out for anything other than closing the land?
Off the top of my head, it was no.
I brought that up earlier, and they said it was a restricted account, we could not take anything out of there.
If we could, we would have already taken it.
Right.
Okay, next up, Jeff Belli, Trash Collection.
Jeff Belli, 2 Birch Street. I'm not gonna get up here and reiterate a lot of what Joe Souza said. I am on the recycling committee. I know a lot of the people that are on the committee are all for, you know, let's go full automated, let's get this over and done with. If we can get the money by, you know, legally, you know, taking it out of the, out of the, out of the landfill closure account, let's do it, let's, you know, let's get into the 21st century, and let's just go and do it. I don't, you know, the reason why I put my name down is I didn't know if the landfill closure, you know, committee was gonna be able to, to speak tonight when I came up, so, you know, I know we did take a consensus at the last meeting, and a lot of, pretty much a lot of the people that were there, if we can get the money, let's get the bins, and let's go, go full automated, unlike, you know, manual for the trash, and, you know, automated for the recycling, let's just go full automated, that way we don't have the trash strewn down Main Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, Seconic River Outfitters, check presentation for winter rec budget items that were cut from the fiscal year 1718 budget.
It's my girl.
How you doing?
Could you state your name and address?
My name's Jenny Costa, 1338 Crandall Road. On behalf of Seconic River Outfitters...
Read your notes.
On behalf, it's gonna mess me up. On behalf of Seconic River Outfitters and Randy LeBeau, we present this check of $2,500 to the Town Treasurer to save the trick-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat.
There you go, girl.
And Christmas festivities. All remaining funds will be donated to Randy LeBeau's charity of choice. Thank you.
Which I think we... Thank you to Seconic River Outfitters for their kind donation to apply to the trunk-and-treat and the Christmas festivities events. Next item, B, Public Hearings and Presentations. Advertised public hearings continued from the May 22nd meeting. B1, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request for a BV license, a liquor license transfer from Benjamin Sports Club, Inc., subject to meeting legal requirements, additional documentation, detailed plan, foreplan, and menu. You see, that's been provided. And at the same time, we'll also take into consideration C1, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request for entertainment license, which was also continued from the May 22nd meeting, and also C2, Paul Hebert, Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road, request approval of a victory license. Hi, welcome back.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good.
Excellent.
Have you been working with the Police Department?
Yes, we have.
And the Town Clerk's Office, and...
I'd just like to reiterate again, that whatever Benjamin's was in the past is not what we are. We're definitely different, the name says it all, you know, we're into music, 60s, 70s, 80s, country western, that's kind of the theme of the bar, it's a family restaurant is really what we want to be. There'll be no drugs there, believe me when I tell you, will not be allowed. I imagine you remember my background was in law enforcement. I didn't mention was my wife, Joanne, who...
Doors on the, where the back patio is, right straight up the side, that's the main door.
The only way to access the patio would be to come through the actual dining room, so nobody can get in or out of that spot unless they come through the dining, because we need to know this, so I can send servers over to serve them.
So is this totally enclosed and fenced?
Yeah.
Yes.
With an exit out, because you need to have an exit out.
Which way is north on this, on this chart right here, just pointing north, because I don't know whether... On this plan...
If you're that way, I'm gonna say straight down.
North will be over here?
Yes. If I'm looking at it this way right here, I'm looking angle, that's all garages, some fences right here, so you can't get in or out of it.
The dotted line that it, that's at the top?
No, it's just a concrete pad.
Okay, so there's, so there's no fence, so the restaurant's here, and then there's this concrete pad, and that's got a big fence around it, and you're gonna have one area blocked off for a barbecue pit, and then there's a garage.
Yeah.
And then there's an opening to a fenced grass area.
That's all, it's all the same wide open area, but it's all fenced in.
And how many tables in total are you planning on having between the pad and the grass area?
Well, I think like six, for like 24.
Once schematicized, once the fire department comes in and gives us what we can do, maybe six to eight, there are, we don't have a capacity yet, so once they, they go over that, and we figure that all out, then we'll know how many we can have inside, and it's outside, and we have to understand how often is that patio gonna be used after rain and snow, and maybe four months, so we can move some of those in to make the right seating capacity when it's not in use, so we don't have a definite yet.
So you don't, you don't have a board of health certificate yet, or you do?
We can't yet, until we're actually ready to, like, that's the last thing you get.
Okay, and how many seats in the restaurant?
Well, for 95, between the bar, the restaurant, the outside, everything.
Which was private, so it's, it'll be around that.
So there are 95 seats in the restaurant?
No. The capacity is about 96 people, so there were probably enough to sit probably seven.
Seventy?
Yes.
And then the outside for like 24.
So, so maybe 70 seats inside, and then depending, because you're showing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 tables just here on the grass, not including...
So if five tables of four people, it'd be maybe 20 people outside.
But, but you don't have any tables on the concrete patio?
Well, we're not sure, you know, we might.
We might, we just think, like, look-wise, it would be nicer to have them on the grass area with flowers and...
I'm only trying to figure out how many people you're planning on serving outside, that's what I'm, and, and are there people, it says in this narrative that they're only gonna be there if you're serving food, but it looks like, since there isn't a floor plan, it looks like there's a big congregating area for sort of, you know, just cocktails, I guess is my question.
That's one of the things that, that, when I looked at this building, this location, which, everyone has an issue today, and it's unfortunate that we live in a society where you're afraid to leave an unattended drink, whether you're sitting at a table, and you want to go out and have a cigarette, whatever the reason, people are very reluctant to do that. Number two, I think it's an ISO, if you didn't have that area where people could smoke, they're gonna go out in front of the building, you know, in front of the building. they're going to go out in front of the building, you know, in front of the building. We don't want people standing around in front of the building.
I was just, I mean, I just am trying to get a feel for the size of this.
I, I just, just want to say one thing, I'm sorry to interject, but, you know, what happens is, is in reviewing the DVR regulations for this, when the applicant applies, they're supposed to list the premises, which these applicants have done, and I'm just going off the applicant, and both schematics, I'm counting 73 seats indoors and another 32 seats outdoors, because the narrative says up to eight tables. So I'm assuming that there will be four chairs to the table. That's another 32, which comes out to 105 spaces, uh, I'm sorry, 105 seats. Now, the only thing that I'm looking at is two issues, which is one thing that needs to have, and that should be zoning compliance.
Before you go there, we want to keep it down to 95 on us, so before I run the lock table off, we'll do it over there.
Okay, I'm just going with what the application says, so that means that there would have to be 26 parking spaces in the lot, and I don't know if there is. There may be, but I, I don't have that in the, the application. That's what your zoning requires, and that doesn't include the parking spaces that need to be dedicated for the employees. That's the first thing. The second thing is, on this, on the outdoor area with the seating, I'm just not sure where that is in relation to the lot line based on what we have, so I can't tell you tonight whether or not the application complies with the zoning. But to me, those are the issues that need to be addressed. One thing in, in your zoning ordinance that you need to know, uh, parking for a restaurant is not geared towards capacity, it's geared towards seating. Now, of course, you know, seating goes into the size of it, but that's, to me, what needs to be looked at here. Excuse me, I don't know how many seats there are in, uh, spaces there are in this parking lot.
When we drew everything up, when Paul drew everything up, and I looked at it, because I work in many, many restaurants, and I looked at it, we basically, the building is under complete and total construction right now, if you go, like, there's nothing in there except construction, so it was more of a visual thing. We didn't take into account heads, we just like, we could put a table there, we could put a table there. We haven't even physically put tables where they belong, so all of this is tentative, meaning we would get told how many we could have, and we would work with it at that point. Because to be completely honest, we haven't lined tables up anywhere, the tables aren't even in the building.
Can I make a suggestion?
So we don't know where they're going to go, or how they're going to fit.
Can I make a suggestion on this? I don't think it's a zoning issue in terms of parking. If the, for this time only, if this application were to be approved, if the service was limited to the indoors for the premises as set forth, that doesn't mean they can't come back later on and ask for outdoor seating, but I just think, for purposes of tonight, the focus ought to be on the interior to move this thing along. I don't think zoning is an issue there because of the pre-existing use. It's a prior non-conformal use, they can go forward.
And we don't, we don't, hopefully, you know, we, we don't want to be a nuisance to our neighbors, and we certainly do not want to be a nuisance to the town. So we would like to hopefully be able to use that space. Again, not being able to use that space really kind of hurts us in what we're trying to do.
This, this license will be up again for review in November, so whenever you, whenever you, whenever it's constructed, you're looking at a couple of months, I think it will allow the applicant to make sure that it complies with zoning, but also have a record of use that they can point to when this license is up for renewal in November.
Chief Lakey?
Yes, regarding the use of the outside patio, just curious, I was going to maintain the alcohol control, is there going to be a waitress out there to monitor this, are people going to get their drinks and go out there? My concern is the fact that there are other underage people out there playing horseshoes or whatever they're doing, there's no, there's no protocols in place where we prevent someone else from getting alcohol. We've had a similar situation in pool halls, et cetera, so...
There'll be no serving of alcohol out there, in other words, there's not going to be a bar outside. And as far as the, the horseshoe pits, they're nonexistent, we're taking those out. That's not the atmosphere we want there. We don't want that kind of noise. We don't want that kind of atmosphere outside. So those pits are being taken out, we want to use this space for dining.
And as far as underage drinking, no matter where you have a patio, that's going to be a concern if you're a family restaurant. Being in the business for such a long time, it's eyes and ears at all times, it's the security cameras that we're going to have outside, which there will be a monitor for inside, and if anybody at any point is out there dining, there has to be a staff member out there as well, whether it's the server, just hanging around, looking and keeping up on things. But it's the same, every server, every bartender, everybody in the building, as well as myself, Paul, Ann Scott, are TIV certified, every employee that we plan on hiring will be TIV certified. We know the laws, we know that they're responsible. We know that it's a criminal charge to the server, we will be all over the underage drinking, we know. But if, if that could happen inside as well, you have to have your eyes, whether they're in the building, outside of the building, coming in from outside, you have to have your eyes on that at all times, whether people are drinking in your establishment or in a patio.
Will, will you be serving alcohol out there? Will the waitress?
The servers will be bringing it to the table if you sat down and ordered, you're going to sit down and order, a server's going to come over to you. So they would go back in and get drinks.
Is that allowed, Tony, under our current licensing?
Well, I know it does it at Evelyn's, the Bold House, the Red Dory, Little Bear, Four Grills, and...
If, if...
Six places in Tivit, and we did some research, that allows it.
If the premises is defined as including the patio, yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's a concern, and I think what the chief is driving at is, is there going to be a defined barrier between where the service of alcohol, because that's serving of alcohol, that's going to be served if you bring it to the table. And I think what the chief is driving at is, is they're going, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, is there going to be a defined barrier between where the patio is and the parking lot or the road or wherever it is?
There is a fence there that goes all the way around that whole enclosed area, six and a half feet tall, six feet tall, so...
Okay, it's going to have surveillance cameras, it's going to have people monitoring it all the time, unless there's no way they can get off the property or out to the parking lot or anything of that nature, that'd probably be okay. But again, my concern is that someone bring it over to the table, then they are responsible for that. Thank you.
So, Tony, you mentioned parking. Is there, I don't see any parking information with the application.
It's only a concern if the outdoor seating is included. The inside seating, however, is grandfathered in, whether or not they have enough parking, I don't even know if that's the case. But because of the prior use, that, that doesn't become an issue. But if the patio is to be used, then it becomes a capacity issue.
That's a very good sized parking lot that's there, I don't know if you're going to drive...
I'd say rough guess, maybe 25, somewhere around there, rough guess, I think...
I don't count them.
It's huge. And there's Austria parking as well.
Maybe it'll stick.
Go Austria parking.
May I ask when you're planning to be open? I mean, what, your construction?
Yeah, we were hoping July 21st.
Which is why the patio's so important.
Is the patio important enough for us to have to continue this, or would you like to get? If it's possible, if we can get you inside...
Inside and a continuance for the outside?
Well, not a continuance, you would have to reapply for the outside. You said, I think that's what the attorney was saying.
What would we have to do, reapply? What are we missing to reapply? What are we missing?
Talk to the guy with the glasses over there.
I believe the seating, the parking spaces.
Now, you're going to have to get, well, you're going to have to get a zoning, you're going to have to get a zoning review from the building official, because there's another issue I have with the patio, I don't know if it hits the setbacks, I just don't know. And you need to comply with zoning, and that's something that is an issue, although I, I do understand what Councilman LeBeau is coming from. The question is, is do you go forward now and try for that later on?
The thing is, the fences, everything was all there when we did this, so it had to be approved somehow by somebody before, no, that fence was all, well, it was all there.
Fence was there, but it wasn't with the license.
We should have saw that coming.
Actually, so, Tony, I, I thought what Councilman LeBeau said was what you were suggesting. That's what, that's what I thought, that you could get in there, get started, at least you're getting some income, you might not have a patio. Is that, I thought that's what you were suggesting.
That's correct, yes, and I'm on the same page with Councilman LeBeau.
Okay, you're just not, you just can't guarantee the next step.
That's correct.
Okay, but at least, so, so at least that would get you in, and then it would have a record, so if you're looking like you're doing a good job and stuff, it would, that's, that's also what I'm thinking too, you have a record to show for it. So it's not everything that you want, but it's moving, I think that's what you were saying, is moving it along.
What is the, what is the town solicitor's opinion on the time period this would take?
Like, could we get it all in for the next agenda? If we did our, if we did our legwork correctly?
Maybe. How's that? I don't know.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwoods?
Yeah. I have a question for the solicitor. Hypothetically speaking, if we move forward with the inside and not the patio, because obviously there's an issue about service on the patio, does that prohibit people from the, from the establishment from taking their beverage outside?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They can go out here, but not with their, with their drink.
Okay.
Now, what you were suggesting is when they're up for renewal in November, they get the permission to do the patio?
Yes.
No, the...
Yes.
That's what I thought that you were suggesting.
Well, they could, between now and November, apply again for a change in status to the license.
Yes, and then, then they got to come back for their renewal in November, so it's more, more steps.
We, we, yeah, we really need the status to get done, so we're...
Understood, but I, you know, I mean, I, you know, who knows with the construction and everything else.
We're just trying to figure out exactly what we have to do, so we're ducks in a row.
So do they have to...
So we're very confused on where we go from here.
It, it appears that the only issue you're going to have is if you have enough parking spots.
So you need a parking plan?
You need a parking plan, and count your parking spots, and then...
That's not the only...
And then the side door, just to check, I don't know.
Right.
So it has to be resumed, reviewed by the building official to make sure it complies with zoning?
Yes.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwoods?
Would it be possible for somebody from the town to provide the applicant with the appropriate steps to get this squared away, because quite frankly, it seems like every time they come in front of us, another thing is added?
Yes.
And I'm getting very tired of, no offense, you guys are nice people, but I'm getting very tired of seeing you come before the council with zero action taken.
I'm sick of you.
Not, not sick of you, I'm sick of, I'm sick of this process continuing, so I, I don't know who would refer that to, is that, is that to the solicitor that we can get this squared away, is that to the administrator, is it, I mean, is it a some...
Building official.
Building official, I mean, can we, can we just get this thing done and so they can come back and not say, well, what else do you want from me today? Because it's very tiring.
But makes sure, yes, so he knows what they need.
Yes.
I thought that's what we had done the last meeting, was someone to sit down with them and give them everything they needed, so when they came back today, they could proceed. That's what I thought we did at the last meeting. But evidently, they didn't get the right information, or...
Well, I think, I think for the last meeting, it was, we referred them to Chief Lakey, and it sounds like everything was squared away with the chief, but there was, there was, obviously, it's not your department here, but there's obviously some stuff that was missing somewhere and lost in translation, so I just, I don't know if we can get this all fleshed out and we can, you know...
Here's the thing, the additional stuff that came in, which is what you need to do, and all of a sudden you got 32 seats, I'm just taking a look at the parking. See, they could get approved tonight with, on the inside.
Mm-hmm.
The question is the outside, that's why they have to come back. On the inside, that thing's ready to go, everything's in order. It's the outside, and it's the extra seats, and I'm taking a look at it, and I know they said four seats, but the application says eight, so that's 32 extra seats, that's eight extra spaces.
Could we fix that?
The drawing shows five, which is 25. Shows five tables, not four. Which is 26.
You'd say those are tables of two.
Real detailed plan, outside patio area, we'd like to put in about eight tables for dining.
Eight tables of two.
It could be four, I don't know.
On our plan, we have five drawn in.
So I, I don't want to, I don't want to criticize town officials on this, I'm seeing eight tables. I take a look, I think that's four seats. Now I take a look at the zoning, that's the problem.
Madam President?
Order tonight on the inside.
Okay, uh, Ms. LeBeau?
I just have a suggestion, if this is, will work, being, have gone through your hoops that you're jumping through right now, if you get your license for this and we speed up your possible outside before another meeting, get, take my advice, get your license, get busy, and then come out and work on this other problem that you have here with the parking, at least you're, you're in the right step. You may not be able to do that, you might not have enough parking. So you can adjust whatever you need by whatever parking lot plan you get.
Okay, now, would it be even shortcut if I, we turn in another one of those minus a couple of tables and put five tables out there? Would that be a shortcut?
You know what, I, I suggest you go talk to the building official, and, and you take a look at it, that's actually, he's the guy you got to take a look at, yes.
May I make one suggestion to you on that, though? I would suggest that you decide what you want your seating plan to look like and have it finalized, because, you know, if you go to zoning and you say, well, we have this area and we might put some tables and we might, you know, in order for them to help you, you have to be able to show them specifically what it is you want. If you give them a sort of blank thing and say, well, I might, there isn't a way for them to do that, so I would really suggest that you guys take a look at your outside patio area and really decide what you want it to be like, have that drawing come in. If it works, great, if it doesn't, and you need to change it, but I'm just trying to save you a step, if you come in with a, we have this space, but we're not sure what we want to put there, the answer's probably going to be, well, I can't give you an answer until you tell me exactly what you want. Just one small piece of advice.
It's obvious we have to speak with the building official about this, to make sure the parking plan is, is what is needed for the amount of capacity, and adjust the capacity to what the parking plan allows us and the zoning allows us.
Correct, because you need to have setbacks, you've got to be within certain distance from the property line. Are there any other questions on the vitrine and the entertainment license, just so that we, we go through it all right now and they know what they need to do?
Hello, I'm sorry.
Chief Lakey?
I did meet with Mr. Salza, and we discussed the entertainment license, we did discuss everything about the restaurant, save the patio, I said that wasn't in my area, that was going to be up to the council. We did talk, Scott and I did meet in my office, and we discussed the number of evenings he wanted to have live entertainment. If we're at that point now, that's where I left it off with this gentleman. I recommended two nights a week, he put in, I think he started out with seven, Scott, correct me please?
What we would like to do is, is if live music with a band, maybe one night a week, two nights a week, everything else would either be a jukebox, karaoke type thing.
Too mad, man.
You know, guitar, acoustic, something that's not going to create a lot of noise. I mean, no one wants to go to an establishment that has any kind of live music that's so loud that you can't talk to the person next to you. They either have to tone it down or they're not coming back, because that's just unacceptable.
It's not the demographic.
On your floor plan, where would the band be set up or the entertainment be set up?
I'm sorry?
It's not clear on the, on the floor plan. It's this, this one that has the pool table and the bar area.
Could you just show it to me real quick? Right.
You want this one?
Is it, is it up in this area here?
What is it?
No, it would be in the far corner.
Hold it up. See right here, this would be where the rumin band goes in the back bar.
Okay.
Right next to the dartboards. If you don't like the music.
Okay. So in that area, you would have entertainment?
Plus the other thing, anytime there's any kind of music, any kind of thing like that, none of the windows and doors are allowed to be open. Because it's obvious, again, we don't wanna be a nuisance to our neighbors and any kind of noise definitely we'd like to keep within the building, not outside.
Okay. Anything else on the entertainment license? Anything on the vichy? We have a menu. Now, Tony, could we approve both of those items at this meeting? So that they only have to come back for the liquor license?
Yes.
So we could do?
Yes.
Both of these so that that's out of the way?
Yes.
And just have the liquor license remain?
Yes.
Depends what you want.
Depends on what you want us to do. Like, we could approve a little indoor liquor license only.
We can do that tonight.
And then you'd have to come back again either in a few weeks.
Is it going to make it more difficult if we accept the inside than to get the outside? Is it going to make it more difficult? We apologize.
So, I just wanna make sure that this is clear. So if they want to have patio seating with food and liquor service, they can come back and amend the liquor license?
Yeah, actually, what you do is you ask permission to expand the premises of the liquor license. You know, a lot of people do that. But you gotta go see the building official first.
But if this is, is this a legal nonconforming premises? And so that if they come back, they won't be able to get? Because that would be an expansion?
If the expansion complies with all of the zoning provisions, the setbacks are okay. The parking is okay. Then they don't need zoning approval, it's a by right. No, I understand too. The question is, if there's not an apartment, then they gotta go to the zoning board first, that's all. And by the way, it's zoning, then you can say to them, "We have off-street parking. You can do it there." But then you have permission.
And the previous building had a liquor license, so it's...
Correct, yes.
It's not as though giving them, but I do have one...
But that's the thing, is the previous liquor license was for the inside, not the outside.
That's correct, yes.
So this would be an expansion on a not, previously legal nonconforming use?
That's correct, yes.
Not the inside license?
The inside license.
I know what they're talking about.
So, Tricia, what's your question?
So, Tony, the one question I do have, just to help the applicants out here. The vichy license also relates to parking and the setbacks, yes?
The restaurant use.
The restaurant use.
Relates to parking.
Right.
So if they had come before you and said, "Look, we're just gonna serve food and we're gonna have soft drinks, but not alcohol." They would need to comply with the zoning provisions as it relates to parking for restaurants.
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to say, just to help the applicants steer clear of another pitfall, is that even though we're talking about your liquor license outside, you have to remember that the whole restaurant use and the reason you need to go to zoning applies to all of the outside. So that you don't find yourself in a situation and, you know, in other words, you can't serve food outside till you've handed the building official. So you don't get into any...
Just to be clear, everything inside the walls, we're good to go. Just outside the wall, we're not.
That's correct, yes.
That's if you wanna do that?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
In the interest of moving this along, I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Before you do that, this is a public hearing on the liquor license.
Roger that.
Okay. All right. So if we're all in agreement...
I just have one more question. Joan's concern is still bothersome. So they're gonna apply for an expansion on their license and that's not gonna run them into trouble?
So long as it complies with zoning.
You've said that a lot, okay.
Okay. So, since this is a...
And any other regulations? Any other regulations?
Okay.
Just to be clear, two days of live music, is that what we're settling on? I didn't hear that specifically.
Actually, there's five nights on...
Live music.
For...
But the chief's aware that the other nights, there's acoustic music, right?
That'd be no worse than a jukebox.
Is that... Okay. But you're okay with the acoustic music?
Yes.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing on the liquor license, is there any comments from the public? Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Last time, anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Ms. Black?
Yes. Sally Black. Someone that's gone to all the zoning and planning and all these meetings forever. And I agree with Mr. Edwards. There has to be a list. They've always said this, a checklist. So people know when they come here in front of you. My son just opened up a place in Newport. And I know he had to know because he has to make the money once you buy the place and everything. And so we're holding these people up and I hope that we can all work together and get this thing done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on the transfer of the liquor license from Benjamin's to Lyrix Bar and Grill. Now, Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the Class BV liquor license from Benjamin's Sports Pub Incorporated to Paul Hebert Lyrix Bar and Grill for Stafford Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements for the premise as defined inside the building.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion on the entertainment license?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the entertainment license for Paul Hebert Lyrix Bar and Grill for Stafford Road. The two nights maximum amplified band music and the remaining three nights, as stipulated in the license, acoustic only.
Acoustic or a jukebox?
Or a jukebox.
Acoustic, jukebox, whatever.
Did you just say three nights?
Two nights.
Two lives?
That's what it says in the license, in the application.
Is that, is that correct? Okay.
It's just background music.
Okay. Then we strike the jukebox and just have two nights live, three nights acoustic?
Two nights of a full amplified band, the remainder being acoustic.
I do have a question, just because we'd like to be clear to not getting into any issues. On Thursday, we've had a huge response from the public through the advertising we've done for Country Night, where we'd have a country line dancer come in, but it's not a band. It's just somebody playing the country music and people dancing to it. That would fall under acoustic. It's not like a band, it's not loud. I don't think it would be any louder than our jukebox, but I just want to be clear so that we don't have any issues. And it's actually only from 6:00 to 10:00, so it's not late night.
I'm looking at the solicitor.
We just like to be clear.
I have to check that with zoning. I'm joking. That falls under the recorded music.
Ms. Black?
Please don't say we can't dance, we're watching Footloose again.
Okay. And I have a second for that motion?
Yes.
I have motions made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. So I have a motion for vichy.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vichy license for Paul Hebert Lyrix Bar and Grill for Stafford Road, subject to the premise as defined as inside the building.
And meeting all legal requirements?
Meeting all legal requirements.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Non-advertised licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements. C3, St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road. 3A, request approval of special event outdoor entertainment license. 3B, request approval of F1 beer and wine license for three days, August 4th, 5th, and 6th. And 3C, public hearing on sound variance live bands for event to take place on Friday, August 4th, from 5:00 to 9:00. Saturday, August 5th, from noon to 9:00. And Sunday, August 6th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Hi. Come on down.
I'm here representing St. Teresa's. Request for the premise that we have in front of you.
And your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Virginia Egan, 105 Florence Street, here in Savannah.
Thank you.
And the St. Teresa's feast is an annual happening, the first weekend in August every year for the past 15 or so. And we have a request of licenses, but the council for their permission to accept.
Very good. So everything's the same as last year? There is a public hearing on the sound variance. So I'd like to open that to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Just for the record, 16 years this event's been held without incident. We do have a police officer because of the alcohol being served and recommend the council approve this application.
Thank you, chief. Last call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
In the interest of time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event outdoor entertainment license for St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Edwards?
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the F1 beer and wine license for three days, August 4th, 5th, and 6th for St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Madam President, if it will please you, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sound variance live bands for the event to take place on Friday, August 4th, through Sunday, August 6th, for St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. You can have your event and we wish you success. C4, Tibbeton Land Trust, approval of special event outdoor entertainment license for event Country Day at Pardon Gray to take place on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We have a public hearing on the sound variance for the special event Country Day at Pardon Gray on September 23rd, from 10:00 to 4:00. Opening the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public? Chief Lakey?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Brown. We have used this, we've had this event before without incident. He will have a detail also there from 9:30 to 1:30 for traffic. And I recommend council approves.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone here from the land trust? Nope. Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event outdoor entertainment license for event Country Day at Pardon Gray for Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Motion's been, do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion on the sound variance?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the sound variance for the special event Country Day at Pardon Gray on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. C5, Melinda Foley Marcelo, 3991 Main Road. Coming before the council for approval of a special event for wedding celebration at 331 Main Road on August 26th, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Hi. I'm assuming you're Melinda?
I am.
Very good. And this is, I believe...
This is for my son's wedding.
Very good. Any questions from the council for Ms. Foley Marcelo?
I just have one. On the application for the special event, the expected number of attendees is listed as 150. However, the sound variance, the number is listed at 130.
I think 150 were invited, but it's predicted that it'll be 130.
Just checking, because the two numbers didn't match up.
Right. And the exact numbers won't be known until the RSVP date, which is the end of July.
Hopefully, they don't show up and just send money.
And this is a two-piece live band?
Yes.
Since this is a public hearing on the sound variance, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Yes, state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is David Collins. My wife and I live at 4001 Main Road. We are the abutters, immediate abutters to the property in question. We're very excited about the event. We're looking forward to it. We don't care about any noise or sound or, we're happy. Please approve this petition.
Can you come move near me?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm very lucky to have a neighbor like David Collins.
Hopefully, he's invited.
Yes.
Anyone else who wishes to speak from the public?
I did speak with the bride and they said they might knock off at 10:00.
Anyone else who wishes to speak from the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the sound variance. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Before I make the motion, Tony, can I do both of these in one shot?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event for wedding celebration at 3991 Main Road on August 26th, 2017, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m., as well as the sound variance for said special event, two-piece live band with amplification.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and good luck. C6, Paula Mox, 55 Sunset View Drive. Approval of special event for wedding celebration at 55 Sunset View Drive on June 24th, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., including public hearing on sound variance for a special event with the disc jockey with amplification. Is Paula Mox here? Any questions from the council on the application? Since this is a public hearing, anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the sound variance? Chief? Okay. Just asking. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Anyone from the public? I now close the public hearing on the sound variance for this event. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the special event for wedding celebration at 55 Sunset View Drive, June 24th, 2017, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., including the sound variance for said special event DJ with amplification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, unanimous.
Maybe they got cold feet, that's why they're not here.
C seven, Brian J. Ferguson, one Main Street, Swansea, Mass. Requesting approval of a special event application for antique show on the grounds of Meeting House to include interior use, July fourth, from six A.M. to four P.M., with an opening at nine A.M. Is there anyone here for this antique show event?
Madam President, there will be a police officer sign the traffic. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic crossing the street, and we had one last year. And we only had, we did have one little fender bender was in the parking lot, but I think it helped the pedestrians cross the street in that area.
Okay, so a police officer will be there?
Yes.
And that's just to control traffic?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam President, a question I have, where is the Meeting House?
On the diagram?
It's in Tiverton Four Corners.
Is it, okay. I wasn't familiar with the main Meeting House.
The building itself isn't on Main Road, the address is East Road, it's kind of behind, but it's across the street from Grace, approximately.
Thank you.
So is this just strictly at the Meeting House?
There was no address, that's why I was kind of confused where it was.
It's on the grounds.
It seems to have all the buildings involved in that area. I did go down there last year to check on it, and it seems to encompass all the buildings in that area, and they are crossing the main artery as well.
It's on the grass.
It's on the grass, it's in the parking lot behind, they set up way behind the main building.
It's outside.
There are vendors there as well, excuse me.
It's outside, mostly.
I think it's both, it's inside and outside. They do utilize some of the buildings, but there is, there are outside vendors, yes. There's actually, there is a cost factor in mission fee.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've been to it, so that's what, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
If it would please you, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event application for antique show on the grounds of the Meeting House to include interior use, July fourth, six A.M. to four P.M., opening at nine A.M., subject to them providing a uniform detail at the site as requested by Chief Blakey.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you. No appointments or resignations, unfinished business. Chief Blakey, request to retain the five new police officers from the Municipal Police Academy, continued from the May twenty-second, twenty-seventeen meeting.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to summarize our discussions for the last couple of weeks. Chief? So, at the last meeting, the council asked the administration to take a look at how to go forward on this and how to deal with the five cadets that we had brought on board, without a vote by the council for the charter. So, we immediately saw there were four issues that we needed to deal with, and will have to deal with going forward. First point is just a simple matter of policy. What policy does the council approve as far as the number of police officers that we should be striving for? We may not be able to get them on an immediate basis because of budget constraints, but there should be some number that the council agrees is a goal, and that's probably true with all our departments. So I've asked the chief to prepare a study, a business case, basically that says, this is why I need X number of police officers. He owes that to me, but that's not an answer that we can give you today, but I don't think we need it today for what we're talking about. The second one was budgetary. First, finishing off this fiscal year, which ends in a couple of weeks, we have looked at that with the treasurer, and there are sufficient funds within the police department budget to cover the five now recruits, I guess is the appropriate term, that are on field training. We've looked at the now fiscal year eighteen budget that comes up next month. The police department is budgeted for thirty officers. That would, he currently has twenty-seven, that would cover three of the cadets that are in training. That leaves a deficit of two. What I'm going to recommend here at the end of the summary is that you, council consider taking a vote to approve keeping the five on for the rest of their special training or their field training, which would be to about Labor Day, it's twelve weeks. And then, by that time, we will know, have a better idea of the attrition that will occur over the course of these next couple of months or more planned for the course of the year. Historically, and the chief can get into this in more detail, the police has seen about two, one or two attritions a year. So it's reasonable to assume that we can cover these by forward-loading some payroll, we can cover these two cadets, the two Delta cadets, for the next couple of months, and we'll have a better sense. What I then like to do is come back in the September timeframe, whenever they've successfully completed their field training, if they all do, and then ask for an approval of one to five cadets, or one to five permanent hires of police officers. The third thing that we looked at issue-wise was legal, and I'll let Tony speak to that in a moment, if you have any questions. But we didn't see anything significant as far as the town being at a legal, being in legal danger or with the contract. We don't think there's any issue contractually with this issue. And finally, was, the last topic was, I think you had referred to it, Madam President, is an obligation that we made to these people six months ago or more. Well, the flip side of that is our reputation. It's going to be awfully hard for the chief of police, the chief, the fire chief, to recruit if we have not held by an implicit obligation. So with those four factors, what I'm recommending is what I mentioned before, is that we, that you consider taking a vote tonight to have them continue for the twelve weeks of special field training, and then we'll be back with a vote sometime in the fall. And I, Chief, for Tony, do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau.
With all due respect, we can't get another officer out of the academy until August, on the road, ready to work until August of eighteen. That's fourteen months away. We just trained all these people. If we're going to let them go, we're going to hold them for twelve more weeks. We're going to say, okay, you got a job for twelve weeks. At the end of the twelve weeks, if we sit here and decide, well, we don't need two of you, now there's jobs opening right now for these men and women to go to. So, I don't think it'll be any benefit to the town to let these people go. So I would like, my thing would be to take a vote tonight to keep these guys. If we let them go now, we're not, it's going to hurt us. So, I would like...
In September, they may start looking somewhere else, and we paid to train them, and now we're going to lose them. There would be an obligation to pay back twenty-five hundred dollars for uniforms. That would be the only obligation they would have to this police department.
Ms. DeMateris?
So what you're saying is increase the FOS to thirty-two with no rule? So that's what you're saying, to increase the FOS to thirty-two, when contractually it's twenty-seven, we've allowed thirty, so now we're going to increase the FOS to thirty-two?
You allow thirty, but in September, there may be attrition where you would pick up those two.
Correct, Joe, that's why, and I'm not even sure I'm convinced of this, but that's why I think we should wait till September to decide whether to hire the thirty-two, because in September, we'll see if there are true openings.
If I may, we may know before September, we may know January, or July second, that we have two attritions. But what I'm suggesting as a matter of caution is that we know that we have a field training program for them for the next twelve months, and that they have never, the council has never taken a vote on their hires for the cadet, for the academy and for this field training. I think you should at least do that. Now, it's, if circumstances change in early July and August, where it makes sense to come to you and say, we should hire these extra two now, we'll certainly do that, but we may not know.
Is there any way we can lock them up?
No.
No, I mean lock them up, that's keep them. Keep them on staff.
That's a bad choice of words.
Yeah, well, you know.
If I may?
It comes from his background.
You're not, you're not going to be able to lock them up now, anyway. That's, when I say lock them up, I just mean, you know, these officers, they've successfully completed their training, they're going to be going through their field training, but you know what? Even if you take a vote tonight and say, look, we want to keep them all on, that's not going to stop one of these officers from perhaps going to a department that is larger and is better paying. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is they're essentially probationary employees now.
Correct.
So, the vote, if you say, look, we're going to keep them on now, that's really not fair to those cadets, because you got to wait till the end, anyway, for them to successfully complete, before you take the vote, and they become permanent employees, so to speak. So I don't, don't think you can take that vote tonight. The real question is, is do you have these five officers continue on, or do you take the vote now to bring it down to three instead of the five officers? I think that's what's the real issue here. But you can't say, look, we want to have you commit, and that's not fair to them. It just isn't, because they don't have that protection that they'll have if they successfully complete their field training, and at that point, you take the vote and they go forward. They're probationary employees, anyway.
Madam President.
And we have, in the past, lost officers during the field training process. So, we may, they may all work out, and they may all complete field training successfully, and...
Actually, after, after the twelve-week training period, the probationary period, without union protection to, for grievance period-wise, continues for almost another year. So should that not work out for any reason? And we can, with full reason, extend the probationary period.
Yeah, I stand corrected, the chief's correct, I'm sorry.
No.
The chief's correct.
If I may, so the two completing, I mean, the two competing concepts here are, do we want to lock ourselves in, and we don't want to lose these guys? I think, you know, to the solicitor's point, there's, we don't know, you know, whether or not these guys are going to, and one woman, are going to make it through to the end of the program. This is a vote that you really should have been positioned to take maybe a year ago, maybe something else. This is really cleaning up from something that should have happened. I think it is important that you take at least that vote. But if circumstances warrant, I'll be back next, in two weeks, but I just don't know that at this point.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
I just have a question for the solicitor, because it was mentioned here about department staffing size. Our contract minimum is twenty-seven, right?
Correct, yes.
But that's just a minimum, we're not held to twenty-seven. We can decide we want thirty or thirty-two, or fifty police officers if we want, correct?
You can make that...
Subject to budgetary.
Subject to budget, but of course, but we as a policymaking board can make that decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to budgetary.
Constraints.
Of course. The only reason I mention that is because I know that in prior discussions, we've had the topic of contract minimums come up, and I want to make sure that anybody who watches this at home understands that we are not beholden to the number twenty-seven. That is the number that we, at a bare minimum, have to have, but that is not the end-all, be-all number for our department.
Madam President.
Ms. Hilton?
I'm still struggling with the actual number of true openings, because this seems to be a bit of a moving target. So, right now, today, and I don't mean budget, I mean physically, how many openings do we have?
We have, right, we have two openings right now.
Two, absolute, for sure. People who existed in uniform were not in those uniforms anymore.
We have one vacancy, we had all along.
Yeah.
The person actually failed the last academy class, not this class, the previous. That was part of the, we were trying to fill in with this, and we had one retirement.
Okay.
We are budgeted for thirty at this current, going into the next year. That's what we're budgeted for.
If I may, Madam President, just to clarify that, though. What's missing from this equation, when you ask that question, how many vacancies we have, what you don't know is how many we want.
Exactly, because I have to, I mean, I don't think, and it all goes back to the genesis of this, that there was a clear understanding when the two thousand eighteen budget was presented, that there were more people in it. So that's why, you know, the thirty number is, I have to admit, thirty's new, I've heard a bunch of different numbers, but, so I just wanted to understand that that might be what is in the budget, but I wanted to know exactly how many, you know, people that have openings there actually were.
What we owe you, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, ask the chief, Madam President, if it's all right, one question.
Mr. Edwards.
Chief, how long has this department been targeting for thirty police officers? I mean, you've been here fourteen years, have you had, has thirty been the number since you've been here?
We've had thirty, we've had thirty-one.
Okay.
We teeter, but we do lose one or two persons, usually one per year.
So thirty's the number?
Thirty is about the number, we've been a high of thirty-one, that was contractually negotiated away, and that was what I had put in my budget, was to try to get that number back. To give up the cars, because if I don't have people to drive the cars, it's kind of a moot point. So that's what we were trying to do.
Okay, so for fourteen years, we've had thirty to thirty-one police officers?
We've had thirty, not thirty-one, but thirty, twenty-nine, thirty, we've been teetering back and forth.
Okay.
Madam President.
Ms. DeMateris?
I actually saw a roster that Nancy had, and at some point, you actually had twenty-five, about six years ago.
It depends when you're counting this thing, because I know the same roster doesn't show thirty-one.
But that's what happened, we started with twenty-five, and then you hired a couple that came from the academy because of those length. So it went up to twenty-seven, then you lost one, two more from the academy, went to twenty-nine. So it's very much teetered.
But could I...
It's never reached more than thirty for a full year.
Well, okay, let me interject this. They don't count as staffing, I'm sorry, Madam President, go ahead.
I think we're getting off track here. I think we got to get back to focus on what we're here to discuss, and this is the five recruits. The town administrator has mentioned that there are several issues, he's going to be working with Chief Blakey on a business case, and will present at a future meeting, but at this point in time, we need to focus on the recruits and the motion to continue their field training the full twelve weeks through...
September.
August or September, however long it goes.
I'll make that a motion, Madam President.
No, wait, wait, wait.
When is the end of field training?
They graduated on the, what, the twenty-sixth of May, so it's twelve weeks from there, roughly the first week of September.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, may I ask one more question? And technically, since they're in field training...
I didn't hear you, please.
Technically, since they're still in field training, and they have to complete that in order to be hired, yes, successfully?
Yes, it's a free requisite.
Okay.
Correct.
I just, I mean, it seems to me that we actually, even if we wanted to, we actually couldn't hire two of them today, because none of them have successfully completed their field training. Is that correct?
Could hire them contingent to completing the field training.
Right.
But that would be the council's choice.
And, but if one of them didn't make it through the field training, then we, I just wanted to...
They would be laid off.
Madam President.
I think, again, we want to focus on the twelve weeks field training on these five recruits. Mr. LeBeau.
We have, Chief, you said you had two, we have three, actual three openings right now. You had an opening, we lost Farias and Carr. So that's three immediate openings. Am I wrong?
Am I missing one? Are you missing one?
No, we had, we had an opening. We had two people graduate from the last class, which we had three in, only two graduated. Reposo and Huber took the place of Farias and Cabral. So that left Officer Lieutenant, Lieutenant's vacancy, and still had that initial vacancy from the recruit that failed the academy. So that's two, that that I have right now.
We have two, so Farias' post has already been filled.
It has been filled, yes.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan.
Okay, so I have a question, and just because I like to repeat things to get myself clear, okay, so Paul, what you're suggesting is that we continue with the five candidates through their training period, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would, and then, and then from that, then we can decide, unless you come up with something earlier where it needs, that we need more action sooner, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I'm okay with that, but I would really like, and it sounds like you already may be on to that, I would really like to see some planning in this town, so that we don't come up with this thing again, and, because it's not, it's not just the police department, and I've talked to you anyhow, I think you have a five-year plan, but I'd like to see, or at least have the town administrator see it, and not just for the police department, because what I think is that the town council needs a five-year plan, and we're not very likely to get a five-year plan if we don't know what the town, the directors are doing and the other departments, but... But, um, just like John, you said you were tired of coming, I'm tired of this constant, you know, we have to react quickly because the sky is falling down. And I don't think it's necessary. And that's not, I'm saying this stuff, this is not, this is not on you. This is just, I'm talking. But what I'm asking is that we can get some kind of five-year plan from the director so that it comes to the town council so we know what we're doing, even if we're not all going to be here for five years. That's, to me, that's irrelevant. Because it's like you still want a direction, you still want to know where you're going. And, and you need to discuss things and you need to get it done where you get more input. So, I'm just using you to take off.
I do agree with you.
Okay.
Myself and Mr. McGreevy have discussed exact, I would, if I may, we've discussed exactly that.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, we discussed it too. And I'm just putting, I'm just putting that out there. Could we please have it sooner rather than later? So, we don't go through this budget process, that, this painful budget process that we just went through the last six months, that I think is unnecessary. And I'm off my soapbox.
You're speaking music to my ears. Because my hope is to be able to bring, prior to the internal budget process that we do at the department level, is have those five-year plans so that not only police, but fire and DPW and others...
Yes.
It's an integrated plan, that you have that to look at. So that when you see a number from the budget, say, for the police department, that has X number of thousands of dollars for the salaries, you know that represents 30 or 31 or 29 or whatever the number is. So, there's no ambiguity as to what we are trying to purchase. You may say, "You're not getting 30, you're getting 29."
That's fine. It's transparency as well, and it's like a sense of direction so that we don't get blindsided. And it's like, at least we're on the same page, we agree, we disagree, just exactly what you said. But it's like, then there's, then we can talk about things and say, "Okay, can you hold off for another year?" Not 10 years, not 30 years, but, you know, make it doable. And so, okay.
Certainly, certainly, Ms. Ryan, we need to give the new town administrator a chance to get his feet wet and get up to speed so that he can provide that information. So, do I have...
I just want to make sure it happens, that's all.
Joe, what was your motion?
My motion was to go along with the recommendation of the town administrator to keep these five on until September. And at that time, reevaluate and see where we go from there, if we can pick up the other two or if they all make it. And then readdress this then.
So, proceed, along with Paul's recommendation?
Yes.
I'll second that, Bad Boy.
Wait a minute.
Through September, if we reevaluate.
Complete the field training.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, we're not hiring beyond 12 weeks anybody.
Right.
Right.
We're seeing them up through their training period.
So, the motion is to have the five recruits complete field training.
Right.
And the town administrator will get back to us before September timeframe on his recommendation.
I have to, I don't have it, I have to count it.
Try it till the 12 weeks.
I'll give you a specific date, Mr. McGreevy.
Madam President.
Can we all agree on that?
No, I can't. I would like to make a motion, we hire...
We only have one motion at a time.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second.
You can amend it.
I can't amend that, I want my own.
You can amend this one.
But I want to hire one.
Oh.
Yeah, you have to amend mine.
We have to vote on this and then if it fails, then we...
Certainly, we can do that. Motion's been made in second to complete the recruits' field training for the 12 weeks and the town administrator to get back to us with his plan. All those in favor? Five opposed, two. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for your patience, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Financial Business, F1, Town Administrator, request approval of attached transfers from various departments to cover year-end shortfalls. 1A Transfer, I'm just going to read them all. And can we, Tony, do the whole lot at one fell swoop?
You can batch them, yes.
Okay, so we'll batch this all up. I'll read it and then we can batch it. 1A Transfer to cover shortfalls within various accounts totaling up to $23,271.24 as presented on spreadsheet F1A. 1B Transfer within Police Department accounts to cover shortfall in account 3330-6167 Uniforms/Equipment totaling up to $4,797.05 as presented on spreadsheet F1B. 1C Transfers from various Police Department accounts to cover shortfall in account number 3330-5101 Personnel Services totaling up to $102,094 as presented on spreadsheet F1C. 1D Transfers as presented on spreadsheet F1D and F1E totaling up to $46,792 from various Department accounts to cover shortfall in account 5500-6457 Trash Collection. Any comments from the town administrator?
None.
Any comments from the council?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I have two questions. I don't know if, am I directing them to you, Paul, or is this still to Nancy? As interim? Direct, okay. So, my question is on F1D account 8830-7470. It's winter recreation, we're pulling 1282 out of there.
That's correct.
The question I have is, is this not the account that Secana River Outfitters just gave a bunch of money to the town for?
Yes, that's what I explained to you earlier in day-to-day, that we're still taking money out.
Okay. And then my second question is account number 6110-6420 on F1E. Bus service, it's a thousand dollars. Where does that bus service from?
Senior Center.
Senior Center, okay.
If it came from a certain department, we at least let them.
Okay.
So, Madam President...
Is the senior center okay with that? Okay.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
All right, so on the F1D, well, let's see, the fourth one, $9,493 for manager's salary? What is that one? Is that because we didn't have a...
$1,150, is that planning? Yes, that's because we didn't plan our left and we...
So... Okay, okay, all right.
Madam President, that's why I'm going to request, I put it on some and not the other, I don't know why, but that we transfer up to, in case there was any little purchase in any of these that, you know, we didn't see yet or we hadn't received yet. So, it will be that amount, at least up to that amount, but not more than that amount.
Okay.
And I'd like that on all of the transfers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Madam President?
What, Ms. Hilton?
No, I was going to make a motion, but go for it.
I would just like to say something to our new administrator, although I completely understand that he inherited all of this cleanup work. You know, the trash issue is well-understood. But I have to say that the police budget troubles me. And it troubles me because, as best I can tell, it's been approximately $150,000 out of that budget. These transfers plus what's already spent to pay the salaries of the cadets that we've hired. And so, when I look at this level of transfer and that level of money, and budgets aren't perfect, and no one has a crystal ball, and things go wrong, and sometimes you overestimate and sometimes you underestimate, it makes me feel like this budget isn't as transparent as I would like it to be. Because that's a lot of money in one department to be able to move. And it, as I said, it makes me worry that the budget isn't as transparent or are what we're doing here out of necessity is sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul? In the, in the police budget, are we, you know, are we going to be okay on fuel and tires? Or whatever it is? I realize that, you know, we've got to do this because we're obligated to these folks and we obviously have to pay them. But, you know, going forward, I feel more comfortable about having a budget that was more transparent than how this one feels to me right now. Just a comment for the, for the future. And recognizing, again, you're batting cleanup here and sorting this out.
Madam President?
Ms. Edwards?
Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Edwards.
Come on now.
Sorry.
If it's all right with you, I'd like to make a motion.
Did Joe, did you have a comment?
I was, just a question on the sick leave buyback. That's for this year.
Where are you, Joe?
The sick leave buyback account number 3330...
On what page?
F1C. 3330-5150. Is that for just this year ending June 30th?
Yes, it is. And it's what the department had felt would not be needed for it this year.
That's what I want, to be honest with you.
We wait what sick days were taken.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Not yet, John.
Randy, go for it.
Mr. LeBeau?
There we go. I just want to make sure that the donation that my shop put out is not going to be donated to the general fund. I want it to go to Christmas, trunketry, and the parade.
That's the next year's fiscal budget.
That's next year?
This is this year's, this is this year's fiscal budget. We're trying to wrap up for the end of the year.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Because I didn't give it to the town. I don't volunteer or pay taxes, you guys get me for enough.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
Hey, anytime.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. And prior to making the motion, I just want to make one quick comment. That we are lucky that the police department, in various aspects, has been fiscally responsible with their money to be able to make these transfers. And I'm very, very scared about next year's budget because a lot of those accounts were shorted relative to where they were this year. So, with that said, I'd just like to make a motion to approve all of the transfers as listed in, where are we at? F1A, F1B, F1C, F1D, and F1E.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
There is no F1E.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Where is it?
Last page.
Yeah, but it's not...
No, F1D and F1E are item number D, are in letter D.
I see it on here, I don't see it on here. On the agenda.
Motion has to be 1A through D.
All right, well, then, in that case, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the transfers listed in items F1A through D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. F2, Chief Lloyd, request approval of transfers to A account 3310-7640 Apparatus Maintenance for $3,000. 2B Account 3310-7530 Software Maintenance for $1,460. 2C Account 3310-7611 Fuel, Oil, and Tires for $2,500. 2D Account 3310-6443 Equipment Service Contracts for $3,000 totaling $9,960 to account 3310-6935 Telephones to cover shortfalls through June 30th, 2017. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Back in August, Mr. Wojcicki signed a contract with Cox on lease line issues, trying to get us off of the copper lines for our radio system. Between Cox and Cybercom, our radio vendor, they're not able to work it out. Cox was not able to give them the bandwidth that they needed. There was an issue with getting equipment and such. In the meantime, we still had a monthly bill coming in from Cox that we had to pay. It took quite some time to get Cox to get on board with it and finally get to the point where Cybercom told them, "We can't do this." And in the meantime, we had to pay those bills and left our telephone account short. We're transferring that money to cover those shortfalls.
So, we're still on Cox Communications?
We are on Verizon lease lines, which are about $1,300 a month that come out. The Cox lines that were going in at about $900 a month have been shut down. And we are waiting, hopefully, to get a refund from them. But that's slow in coming, I don't, the refund is not going to come back in cash. The refund is going to come back in credit towards our account going forward. In the meantime, our account is still short.
Thank you.
We had done this back in March, looking to get this transfer to cover this.
Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers requested by Chief Lloyd, items F2A through D, 9960, to account 3310-6935 to cover the shortfalls through 6/30/17.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next up, F3, Chief Lloyd, request transfers, request approval of transfers for 3A account 3310-6310 Recruit Process for $2,196. 3B Account 3310-7611 Fuel, Oil, Tiles, Tires for $6,000. 3C Account 3310-6968 Medical Physicals for $3,439 totaling $11,635 to account 3310-6969 Medical Supplies. Chief Lloyd?
Yes, Chief, the state of Rhode Island updated their protocols, which our rescues operate under. In those protocols, there was extensive addition of medications and such that we had to purchase. Those items ran that account, our medical supply account, because we have to buy our supplies ourselves, ran our account short. Again, we looked at what other accounts we could at least get some money from to try to cover that shortfall.
Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers requested by Chief Lloyd, items F3A through C totaling $11,635 to account 3310-6969 Medical Supplies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to bring G6 and G7 forward. There are people in the audience that have been waiting patiently. And this is a lengthy agenda that might go on further.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item G, New Business, G6, Stone Bridge Abutment Ad-Hoc Committee. Brett Pelletier, request authorization to bid Stone Bridge project. Brett?
Hello?
Hi.
Thank you very much for bringing me up on the agenda and taking some time to speak with you. I've outlined the gist of my request in a brief memo. I don't have it in front of me, but... Oh, Leon has got one here. To, I'm obviously Brett Pelletier, the Stone Bridge Ad-Hoc Subcommittee. We are ready to advertise the construction of the Stone Bridge Abutment Project. We've been through all of our permitting. 90% design was completed, CRMC permits are in hand. Our bit, our final plans were reviewed by the town and various bodies within the town, including the DPW Director. Responses to VHB were addressed. Responses to VHB were addressed, and we have final plans now. And we are ready to advertise for direct construction. We also have to advertise for, or rather, it's still an advertisement for, under the Master Price Agreement from the state, for construction supervising services and materials testing. But that's ready to rock and roll. So we are expecting about three-week advertising window, week for responses to questions, and hammering out the details another week or so, we'll have a contract in hand, hopefully to start construction mid-August.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Pelletier, for the advertising process, how are you guys going to go about doing that? Is it just in the paper, or do we have a longer-term or another option?
It's a three-fold approach. We are going to be advertising in the Providence Journal to cover our requirement of print news, but also, we will be reaching out directly to potential participants. There aren't a lot of people that do this sort of work, and there are a handful locally. We're going to advise them that it's happening and direct them. I think we're going to post it on, where'd you go? There it is. Bill Anderson can talk about it, too. But we're going to do a digital system, I think it's Hightail he's going to use, that we can keep track of comments and who has plan sets and respond easily that way.
Okay, yeah, the only reason I ask is because the city of Newport developed a very robust online tool. And I'm not quite sure why we, as the town of Tiverton, are the only municipality in the East Bay or Newport County that doesn't use it.
I've asked that a number of times, and actually suggested that it be used in the past. But I've spoken to Bill about that as well. It's the e-procurement site for the city of Newport.
Correct. Most of the state uses it.
Yep.
I have no problem doing that. I just, you know, that's fine. We've never done it in the past. Again, this is really the first time, I think, a big construction project's actually going on the street that I had to put the front end together for. I was going to do it internally so I can keep a tab of who's picking up the plans. So if there's an addendum that has to go out, I can issue the addendum, and there's no bid issues. So we can get the bids back. Everyone can't say that they didn't get the bids. Because our current system, where we just posted on the website, I just, we don't, we don't know who picks it up, who downloads it or whatnot. This case, I'll know exactly who, who was able to get it.
And that system works just like the e-procurement site, where you register as a contractor, and your, your time is tracked, and you, the, we'll know who asks questions, who has plan sets, and they'll get all the distributions if we send an email out.
That was it?
So I do have a question. Your last paragraph said, "Please draft a resolution," outlining the approval language for our files and for submission to RI DOT for record-keeping.
Yes.
Does that mean you need a letter from the council?
As it would happen, Nancy, I think, has drafted one.
Oh, it is a resolution of the vote of the council, and it'll be truly testified by me. I drafted it, but I, I need to know who's making the motion and what the vote is.
Yeah, we have, through our work with RI DOT, we have established sort of a hypersensitive paper trail, and what we're doing is so that RI DOT can include in their records, say, "We concur with the resolution of the town council. Here is the said resolution," and they move it up the chain.
Okay, so this resolution would authorize the Stone Bridge Abutment Ad-Hoc Committee to advertise for bid?
The resolution says on Monday, June 12th, the Tiverton Town Council, 2017, Tiverton Town Council held a regular council meeting, Counselor, I put Edwards, motion seconded by Counselor, I put Hilton, to authorize the advertising and solicitation of bids for the construction work on the Stone Bridge Abutment Project. The vote was unanimous. I mean, I just drafted that.
The only, the only recommendation I would make is that the committee itself is not going to be doing the advertising. It's going to be through, obviously, the town clerk's office, and the DPW is going to be, you know, involved in that as well. We don't actually do anything. We talk a lot, but we don't actually do anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're basically authorizing the town clerk to put forth the advertisement. Have we also, has anybody reviewed the bid documents besides the, the ad hoc committee?
Well, so.
I was looking at Tony. So you don't, do you need to look at any of this?
I don't think I do.
Okay, because we have.
It's standard DOT boilerplate that Bill will recraft to fit the town, for the most part. There's some pretty substantial language that we've got in advance. Is that accurate?
Yeah, basically, we've taken on a front end that I've used in the past with the state. We've worked with the DOT, and they're standard, they're standard language to it as well. The trust has reviewed it for insurance reasons. I know that for a fact, because Matt had that done with the prior administrator. I don't know where it went from there. I did send it over, and I don't know who else the former administrator might have had look at it. I don't.
The bid book, everyone has seen, and Tony's office has seen it as well, and had no further comments, but the, the actual advertising language were not there yet.
Yes, that's correct.
But DOT has provided some boilerplate for the, for that.
Okay.
And there should be, Bill's got a set of plans and the, and the bid book, and so does the town, the new town administrator as well. And he was brief today on our progress.
Great.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
Do we have an idea on what the price is going to be, to make sure we can cover it? That you guys have enough funding to do this project?
The pricing is based on VHB's most recent modeling, and it's, this is not a typical structure. So they've, they've put together both transportation infrastructure and maritime infrastructure modeling to price it. I'm not a construction or engineering, or pricing engineer, and, but I think we're reasonably confident. What we've done also is created a couple of areas where we can, in an emergency, take funds from. The first is, we created the base bid and an ad alternate for all the lighting infrastructure. Sorry, the lighting infrastructure, the handle, the conduit, all the infrastructure will be there, but the light fixtures are an ad alternate. That's about $135,000 to $145,000 that in, in the worst-case scenario, we can take that money and use it for base construction. Additionally, there's $50,000 in a line item for the, the dock and floats. We don't think we'll need nearly that much money for about six or eight floats and a ramp. So that's another area. We're, actually, we're pretty confident we're not going to need any of that money.
Yeah, so basically, you've got some safety nets there.
Correct. And we've got a pretty, pretty big construction contingency and mobility line item.
Very good.
But we won't know until we get bids.
Right.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
In the interest of preventing Madam Clerk from having to change what she's already drafted, hopefully Counselor Hilton will second, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution as drafted by the clerk.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Well, then, the motion to go to bid. Whatever it is that we need to do so that you don't have to edit that document again.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the town clerk to go out for advertisement for the Stone Bridge Abutment Project. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Before Brett leaves.
Are you psychic, Nancy?
Madam President.
Ms. Hilton.
Before Brett, before Brett leaves, I would just like to express, I think, all of our incredible appreciation, given that this project has literally, I mean, we have snatched victory from the jaws of defeat, when you realize how close we were to losing this project, losing all this money, how long it's languished, and Brett and a very small subcommittee of volunteers have actually rolled this rock all the way to the top of the hill, and we're actually going out to bid. And as much as they downplay what they have done, it's been an extraordinary amount of work, so I would just like to express my extreme appreciation for almost, and I know it will happen, actually bringing the abutment repair project of how many years languishing now?
Ten at least.
Ten, fifteen years languishing, almost to fruition.
Patrick Kennedy was still on all.
What, Patrick Kennedy, right, arranged the original federal funding. So I would just really like to say thank you to you, Brett, and to your subcommittee.
That's awfully generous of you, and I'll be happy to exhale when it's completed and the construction is done and the town is reimbursed. But I would just say that there is a bit of, in my memo, that just says interdepartment and committee coordination has been essential in getting to this point. RI DOT, the DPW director, who, I think the week he was hired, I was in his office banging on his desk. The new town administrator, who I met with today, Nancy, has done yeoman's work, both as clerk and interim town administrator, and the committee, along with the Grinnell Speech Committee and the Harbor Commission and everybody else. It's, it's more of organizing the people that need to do what they need to do than anything else, and I'm just happy that we're getting positive results. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett. G7, James Long, Longplex LLC, Tiverton Recreation LLC. 7A, request approval of industrial way improvement agreement, and 7B, request approval of sewer easement agreement. How you doing? Very good. Just want to make sure that these two documents were reviewed by the town solicitor's office?
They were, and you may notice in your packet that there is an email from Peter on this. And I concur with what he has in the, in the email, and I would ask if the matters are to be approved, that it be with the condition that the two changes that he highlights are made to the documents.
I don't have any email.
It was in the packet. It's on the last page of 7A. The specific changes are on the bottom of Page 1. It states that Long will be responsible for the maintenance, but then at the top of Page 2, it states that the town and Long will enter into a mutual maintenance agreement. It's contradictory and should specify that Long is responsible for the maintenance. And 2, the contract information on the agreement needs to be updated to reflect the change in the administration, in the administrator. Those two changes, Madam Chair, Madam President, we recommend that the agreement be signed.
So the first one is to.
Madam President.
So we need to specify, are you going to be responsible for maintenance, or is it going to be mutual? And the maintenance is of industrial way?
That's correct, yes.
From Progress Road to the cul-de-sac? I'm not expecting Mr. Long to be responsible for all of industrial way.
I'd actually like that.
I know, but I don't think Mr. Long would like that. So I do have to question that.
It should be on just my improvements.
Correct.
Post.
That's correct.
Stonewall and fence.
Right.
That's correct, yes.
I do not want to plow the road.
Yeah, all kidding around aside. He's correct.
Technically, I'm putting Stonewall on my property. I'm putting Stonewall on Lynch's property. It was a piece of the town I want to continue, so you don't know there's a separation. Then Stonewall in the middle of the cul-de-sac, so people aren't driving over like they've been doing forever.
To be clear, after the, now, therefore, at the bottom of Page 1, there's a sentence, "Longplex LLC agrees to maintain and repair the installed improvements as listed above that is 1 through 6." And that's, that's what Longplex would be responsible for.
So then the. I don't think it'd be 1.
It wouldn't be 1.
Why not?
For the road?
Yeah. I kind of like that.
I, I don't think so.
No, he needs, he needs to install it, and will make the necessary changes. The language has to be, the language has to be corrected. We'll make sure that he doesn't have to pave the road afterwards, but he has to do it in the first instance.
Right, I'm paving the road.
Right.
And I'm turning it over to the town.
Yes.
2 through 6.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's correct, yes.
It's on, it's on Christine's system, so she's got to make the changes.
Okay.
So.
We do the final call.
Mr. Edwards, did you have a question?
No, I'm ready to make a motion whenever you're ready.
Well, I just want to make sure that, because installing a greenway path along both sides of pavement, again, that's within the town right of way, correct?
I did agree to cut that. I did.
Okay. All right, so it's 2 through 6, not 1 through 6?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Although, I tried.
That was not a good idea. No, 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 no. Any other questions from the council? Okay. All right, so John, Mr. Edwards, would you like to make a motion?
Not, not Ms. Edwards. Thank you, Madam President. Make a motion to approve the industrial way improvement agreement between the town of Tiverton and James Long, Longplex LLC, with the changes as discussed from the solicitor.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion for the sewer easement agreement?
Madam President, make a motion to approve the sewer easement agreement between the town of Tiverton and James Long, Longplex LLC.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
We almost got you to pave, or to plow for us, Jim.
I'll be back.
Very good. Good luck. G1, Chief Floyd, Tiverton Fire Department, request council acceptance and adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan rewrite, as approved by RI EMA and FEMA Region 1. Mr. Lloyd, Chief Lloyd?
Madam President, before, earlier this year, we were brought before you for a draft, reviewed it, we entered into the comments to it. We put that publication together, which I believe you should all have a copy of that, if you do not. We'll make sure you get it. This is part, this has to go in and be folded into the comprehensive plan, very quickly approved by FEMA Region 1, which covers all of New England. So the final section of that now is council approval and adoption of this document.
I did see that you made the changes to the map, and I think there was one other issue, and I believe I've seen the changes. Any comments from the council? Any questions?
Madam President, I just have one.
Mr. Edwards.
First page, are we still listing Matt Wojcik as town administrator? Or do we need to change that? Just a question.
I don't believe it's a substantive change to the entire thing that would send it back for review. I would ask that if we can change that to Mr. McGreevy without any complication or asking having to go back for a full review of it simply because of that change, that I will find out about making that change.
The motion should be to approve with any changes that need to be made, made to update town information.
So in that case, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the acceptance and adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan rewrite, as approved by RI EMA and FEMA Region 1, subject to any town personnel changes that need to be reflected in the document.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was a lot of work by everybody.
Yep, definitely get that done. G2, town clerk, scheduling a special meeting for joint public hearing with planning board on proposed 2017 comprehensive community plan, possibly on Thursday, July 20th.
Madam President, the planning administrative officers had these printed, the comp plan, so it's finalized. Allison Ring, I believe her name was, has completed that. She'll come to the public hearing. And then it was suggested that we do a joint public hearing the last time with discussion so as to save money on advertising and to move this along before it goes to the state final approval. So I just put that date out because this being a comp plan, I have to advertise it three times.
That's correct, yes.
So it's going to take me till then before we could get it on an agenda. Oh, that's a special meeting, but it would take at least that time for us to get it advertised properly. I just guessed that July 20th, it's a Thursday, because the special election for charter review is on the 18th. I can't do it Monday before. It was going to be too confusing with that, so I wanted to get past that. It was going to be too confusing with that, so I wanted to get past that.
I won't be able to come and answer.
It doesn't have to be that date, I just...
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
So, what we're going to be doing is it would be a joint public hearing with us and the Planning Board?
Yes.
So, what is that?
That's what the council wants.
That's like 16 people? I mean, I know I've got a lot to say on the comp plan, I'm sure other members of the council will do as well. That could be a very...
The plan will be reviewed, so they should be pretty...
I mean, if they're fairly silent, then I think we'll be okay, but...
Well, this is a public hearing, so the public is also going to make comments on this, and so who would be answering those questions? Would it be the Planning Board?
Why are we doing a joint?
Well, I'm going to tell you this. I always get nervous about these things. State law on the adoption of comprehensive plans says that the Planning Board is supposed to have a public hearing, and then the town council is supposed to have a public hearing. Nancy is correct when she says that the idea is if you have a joint, it speeds up the process and it cuts down on the advertising for it. I had some questions as to whether or not that is acceptable under the Enabling Act, but the Planning Board, I was at their last meeting, they said to me that the state assures them it's okay, and you know, ultimately, this goes to the state for the approval. At this public hearing, the council president is correct, this is an opportunity for the public to make comment on the comprehensive plan, and you know what? Any questions that come in would probably be fielded either by the administrative officer, the Planning Board, or the town solicitor's office. After that, you know, the council can certainly deliberate on it and make comment from there. There's not a requirement that the vote take place at the public hearing. And in fact, in my opinion, that's not what, that is not what is contemplated under the Enabling Act.
It's just to listen to the public.
Exactly. It's a chance for the public to get in and say, "This is what we think about the comprehensive plan, and we have some questions about it."
Okay.
This is going to take more than one night. I mean, this is a series of... Because we're going to have to deliberate and make our own comments after we hear what the public says. That's the whole idea.
Yes, there is a requirement that a public hearing be held for a comp plan change, and that would satisfy the statutory requirements that there be a public hearing for the Planning Board and the Town Council. Then after that, you deliberate.
So...
All right, so as long as I have a chance to pontificate at some point.
Well, okay, so then I have a...
Ms. Ryan?
Thanks, thank you for, so when I have a question, so, okay, so the Planning Board, we have, they have an open meeting there, the public, we listen to the public, then there's changes for the public, and then the Town Council might want changes again, and do we have to have another open meeting? Because it's going to be changes with the public and then changes, it sounds like, with the Town Council. So, is there going to be another one after that?
You could have a meeting after that, yes. You could have more than one meeting after that, yes. Ultimately, a comprehensive plan is considered to be in the nature of an ordinance. It's a legislative act. It has to be approved by the Town Council. If you take more than one meeting, you take more than one meeting, and some Town Councils and City Councils do. Ultimately, it goes to the state for approval. However, in between the time that it goes from the Town Council approval to the state, it is considered operational for any decisions that your boards make and for appeals in court, too.
Okay. Okay, so if we could... What was that? What was the question?
The Planning Board will vote. They can vote after the meeting, too, to forward it along to the Town Council after that public hearing, which they need to do.
So, they would make the changes?
Shouldn't we have two separate ones? Even want the public to come out twice to say?
Yeah.
No, it's just...
Well, but they might, they might make comments to the Planning Board. Planning Board may make the changes, and then there's no point for them to come back.
Hi, Susan Gill, I don't know if I can clear up anything, but I think, you know, realizing it was two summers ago that the Planning Board went through each element in the comp plan. So, basically, we've done all the revisions that we were prepared to do at that time. Then it went to statewide planning. So, what has come back now is fulfilling the additional requirements and clarification that statewide planning had. So, I think to have a public hearing for the Planning Board would probably, it would be minimal to know changes probably that we would contribute at that point, because we've been through it and we're just looking to move it to the council. So, that's why it had been suggested that we did a joint public hearing with the council and the Planning Board. Basically, it's more to allow you and the public to comment, because we're, we pretty much fulfilled our obligation and made our comments. So, I don't know if it's possible to do it all in one. We thought it would expedite things a little bit. I talked to Kevin Nelson at statewide planning. He said, "You can do it either way. You can have a public hearing with the Planning Board, send it back to them for anything else, and then go back to the council, or you can just do it all in one." It's just timeframe difference, but, you know, it's a matter of, and what I have is I got the copies printed. Nancy's going to distribute them to you, and they'll be put online, and they'll be put online for the public.
That's what you're talking about.
So, basically, yeah, all the red line in there is the work that Allison Ring has done and the things that she had, and I thought if she, if we had a joint meeting, then she could present the elements to the council and to the public, and she probably at this point is the best qualified to answer questions. She's got experience with comp plans, she revised this one, and, I mean, she could answer questions much better than I could about it. So, it's however you want to do it, it was just that was one suggestion, was to do it as a joint public hearing, do it one time. It might take more than one meeting, but rather than Planning Board, back to statewide, to the council, back to statewide, just do it all in one chunk and get it...
Susan, the suggestion to have the joint meeting was from the state, correct?
No.
It was?
No.
Oh, I thought it was.
No, it was when Nancy was administrator and Ms. Hilton suggested that we could do it that way, and then I checked with Kevin Nelson, and he said, "You can do it that way." Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's, I mean, you can do it either way, it's an either/or, but, you know, we're just trying to expedite the process by doing it as a joint meeting. So, I think, you know, when, if it is the group, there probably won't be a huge amount of input from the Planning Board, because we've reviewed it, so it's more for the council.
But the purpose of a public hearing is to get the input from the public.
Right, right.
So, if the public has comments that the Planning Board needs to go back and review, then that's your public hearing, and then once you've done that review with the public, then you could have made changes to it, then it comes to the council for final public hearing and final decision.
Or if they make suggestions, then Allison can make those changes, and it would, it would, it seems like it would fall on the bailiff of both the council and the Planning Board. I mean, it's like, it's one product if it comes before both entities. It's one product. You don't have to separate it out into the plant. I don't think you have to differentiate between planning. We can do whatever, you know, the input is as a combined unit and then send it to statewide planning as a finished product. I think because Allison has addressed all their concerns, that as far as statewide planning goes now, it probably is a finished product.
But the public still has an input.
Right, yeah, they can...
So, if the public comes to the Planning Board and says, "We don't like this part and this part," then I would expect the Planning Board to go back and discuss that, maybe make changes, and then present that to us.
Well, I think if the Planning Board and the council did it in a joint meeting, we could all discuss it at one time.
Ms. Hilton?
I think one question to answer is the purpose of the public hearing, and when I say that, looking at, you know, the size of this document. I think the point of the public hearing is to make sure that at a relatively high philosophical level, that people agree or disagree with what's in here.
Right.
But I don't think the point of it is to turn it into an editing vocabulary exercise or, you know, to be so, so to me, at the public hearing, either at a high level, the public is going to say, "We like this," or we gen, or this thing, this one section we're really concerned about conceptually versus, you know, expecting that we're going to have, although we may have some folks who have read every single page and have, you know, editing, editing changes, but I'm not sure that's the point of what the public is.
But I think you have, I think we have the option at the public hearing that if people, the public wants to make changes, you as a body can accept them or reject them, I assume. Just because they're presented doesn't mean you would have to adopt them into the plan, I wouldn't think. You know, part of a public hearing is, like any public hearing, people can express their views, their opinions, and then you can adopt them into the plan or not.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards, do you have a comment?
I do. I got to tell you, I think that we should have two separate, the more I listen to this discussion, I think we should have two separate public hearings, because it seems to me as though it's almost as if the council is coming out saying, "Yeah, here's what the Planning Board came up with, and we're all on board with it, too," and that kind of makes me feel a little icky about it.
And hasn't it been presented?
Yeah, we haven't really even gone through any of this.
Actually, Madam President, I don't...
Ms. Ryan?
To me, it's more like, I'd be interested in hearing what the public says, and as long as the Planning Board says it, you know, ahead of time, it's just like, let's just hear what the people are saying. To me, I don't see it as, we're not sitting there, it doesn't mean we're endorsing anything. As long as it's clear, you know, we haven't done that yet, and just present, you know, these are the, these are the suggestions. My guess is some of them are not going to be suggestions, some of them will, but some will be questions and clarifications. So, I would rather, you know, have it, if we can have more people go to that one meeting, because once you start splitting it up, I think you're going to get fewer and fewer people.
It's not, it's not splitting it up, it's having two public hearings. One public hearing in front of the Planning Board.
Yes, I understand.
And another public hearing in front of the Town Council. So, it's not splitting it up into pieces, it's actually fulfilling each of our duties in regard to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I understood that. I think it was mostly to say, however you want to say it, I understand what you're saying. I could see where it would be easier if we have one, one meeting, get as many people there as possible, but I don't, to me, it's not worth a long discussion, whether we do it one way or another way. We're going to have public hearings.
This plan is worth a long discussion.
Madam President, there's another, there's another way to look at this, though. The first presentation will be the first time the public hears it.
No, no. The public, the Planning Board, the Planning Board did have a public hearing. We have had a public hearing before you have the red line, yeah, prior to the red line.
So, this is the first time they've seen this one.
Right.
So, they can digest what they've seen, and then they can, then the second public hearing, more people will have had some knowledge of it. There's two ways to look at this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you can do it either way.
So, question, you just said the Planning Board already had a public hearing.
We had a public hearing, like a year ago, almost a year ago.
Right.
And we sent it to the state, and when it came back, they had their questions, and then those were the things that Allison Ring addressed, were their questions.
So, does the Planning Board need a second public hearing?
My opinion, yes.
I mean, we can, that's what I'm saying. We can do it individually, or we can do it combined. It's really your preference.
I just want a clarification on that.
It's your preference.
Because it's amended from what the public heard in the first instance. So, I do think they have to have another one.
My only concern is if the, if we have a public hearing and there are amendments, it has to go back to planning, the Planning Board, then we would have to have another separate public hearing again.
Yeah, okay.
So...
We're going to, like I said, we're going to end up having more than one.
It's because they used to be the old way where the council had it before it went to statewide planning. Since the council has not reviewed it before going to statewide planning, now if you have it, it's going to go back to statewide planning with some more comments coming back and be readdressed again.
But that's water under the bridge. That's the way it happens. I mean, what are we going to do about it? We can't go back.
No.
You just, you got to take a hold.
I mean, that's what we'll do, is if we have the public hearing, then any changes that happen, we send it back to statewide planning, they make their comments, however long that takes, and then it comes back to the council, and then you will have your hearing, public hearing, and then you might have comments again, so that's...
Madam President?
Mr. McGreevy?
Just a question and then maybe a perspective. Even though it's, there's a lot of substantial information in this, in strategies around economic development, which I was actually looking at this afternoon, there's nothing to prevent us from taking the spirit of it, as long as this process may take, from the point of view of going through a couple of public hearings and then changes and so forth, is there anything to prevent us from adopting the spirit of it as far as what we're trying to do in our various committees of work?
The Comprehensive Plan Enabling Act does not have any provisions of spirituality. And I only say that because you have a comprehensive plan now, and this will supersede it. So, I don't think that you can say we're going to follow the draft until it is in fact adopted. So, you know, to me, it's, you can go either way. I think the Planning Board is pretty much set on where they are in the process, it's just a question of whether or not you want to have a joint public hearing or just have a separate one, and that's really the vote for tonight.
Okay.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
If it's all right with you, I'd like to make a motion to have two separate public hearings, one for the Planning Board and one for the council.
I second it.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? 6-1. Two public hearings.
So, we're not going to set that date, because we can't have it after.
Yes, that's correct. Now, the Planning Board will have their public hearing, depending on what happens there.
And they can send it to the state, and then it can come back again, go back again.
Okay. Okay, next item, G3, Chief Blakey, permission to advertise bids to purchase one late-model Ford or Chrysler program vehicle for code enforcement officer.
So, the police department is going to purchase a car for the building?
No, the town is going to, he, Mr. Hall requested that, seeing that I had all the specifications and the advertisement and worked with the town clerk to advertise to get his car, and that's what we've done, and go forward with that.
Is the money in the budget? I don't remember.
The money is budgeted, yes, ma'am. $14,000 is budgeted.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Chief Blakey, in your specs, it says Ford or Chrysler product?
Mm-hmm.
Could we make that just a Chrysler product? I mean, you've got a ton of Dodges kicking around, we've got parts for all the vehicles. I'm hopeful that it's...
It won't be the same model.
Ah, okay.
It probably is going to be a six-cylinder, 200 series Chrysler product, not a Charger.
Not a Charger, all right.
Front-wheel drive.
That's no fun.
This is for the building inspector.
Right. The chief is helping out the building inspector.
He's a car dealer.
He's a car dealer, yes.
Madam President, if I can just add to that, I asked the department heads that have a fleet of some sort, which would be DPW, the chief, the chiefs, fire and police, we're going to gather, I believe we have a meeting for next week, to look at the total car issue and just see who needs what, when, and plan this out a little bit so it doesn't seem so incremental.
And also an inventory of what we have, because it's not very specific what we actually have.
I believe we're meeting tomorrow at 10:30?
Tomorrow.
And the car choices, Mr. Edwards, would be definitely on Mr. Hall.
Okay.
Once the bids come in, that would be his area.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, chief.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Make a motion to grant Chief Blakey permission to advertise bids to purchase a late-model Ford or Chrysler program vehicle for our code enforcement officer.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
No. I had a question, not to exceed the $14,000 that was appropriated?
Yeah, it's whatever's in the budget.
Okay. Just want to make, on the record.
Amend the motion?
Yeah, not to exceed the $14,000 that was appropriated in the budget.
Motion's been made and seconded, as amended. All those in favor? unanimous.
Good catch, Shell.
G4, Chief Lloyd, permission to advertise and hire a part-time clerk?
Good evening again.
Hi, chief.
Through the budget process and the last FTR, it was approved for a part-time position for the... for the fire department to help. One of the assets that we're hoping to acquire out of this is that we'll see an increase in rescue revenues, which Counselor Edwards did an awful lot to put together, report, which you've all seen. We've spoken with AFSCME, there is a job description that was established for this position. I just also wanna make sure that it's understood, this is a union position, but a non-benefited position. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear. So we're asking for permission to advertise, to go through the process set out in the charter, and to hire that person. Again, we would come back to you for final approval for the hiring.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
Just a point of clarification for the chief, it was not just me alone, it was a lot of work done by the committee, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Well, in that case, I'll make, if it's all right with you, I'll make a motion to grant Chief Lloyd the permission to advertise and hire the part-time clerk for the fire department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Counselor, G five, Counselor Hilton, status discussion and possible vote regarding Rhode Island General Assembly Bill H six one seven two?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So we voted on a resolution about this bill, which is, which is an agriculture right-to-farm bill, which would eliminate municipalities' ability to restrict commercial activities on agricultural property. And as I think I mentioned, we have 100-plus registered farms, so we'd have a significant number of properties with the ability to do virtually whatever they wanted outside of zoning. The first version of this bill went to committee and was held for further discussion. However, there are people that I know in the state who follow this quite closely, there is apparently a sub-A version of this bill that is floating around. Actually, I know there is, because I've seen the sub-A version, even though it hasn't been introduced. And it has some of the earmarks, because there are some very well-connected, one or two very well-connected persons in this state who want this legislation passed, and it has a bit of the earmarks of something that potentially slides through at the 11th hour at the General Assembly, when no one's paying a great deal of attention. So I had two questions. One was for the solicitor, which is, on the sub-A version, which is probably going to be introduced, is the resolution that we passed good enough, or does it have to specifically recognize sub-A, number one? And number two, you know, this legislation has such broad-reaching effects for all of us, that it's really worth paying attention to and making sure that this is not an 11th hour play in Providence. So, Tony, do we need to amend our resolution, or will it cover the sub-A?
Well, I'm gonna make a suggestion to you, and I just wanna say a few quick things, because I'm actually familiar with the bill, and I'm also familiar with the Right to Farm Act. And the current Right to Farm Act allows, because I had a council member ask the question, the section of the law that it seeks to amend defines agricultural operations. And the current law states that the mixed use of farms and farmlands for other forms of enterprise, including but not limited to, the display of antique vehicles and equipment, retail sales, tourist classes, petting, feeding, and viewing of animals, hayrides, crop mazes, festivals, and other special events are hereby recognized as a valuable and viable means of contributing to the preservation of agriculture. Now, in terms of tiveterin, these uses would be considered accessory to the agricultural operation. And the distinction between this and the bill that was proposed is that for these types of activities, just like anyone else, you approved one tonight for departing gray, they would come to the town council for permission, so everybody would be treated the same. Under this current bill, however, that it is, that would all be eliminated, and anybody that gets the definition of a farm could do any of these activities, and actually even more, because they have greater definitions. My suggestion would be to amend your original resolution, excuse me, to state that you would like to see section two dash twenty-three dash four of the general laws remain as it is. That would encompass any subAs that you may have involved in the operation. Does not mean that farms and farmland can't participate in those areas, but just gives the same supervision that you would have for other uses of the town, that's all. And I think that should be fixed.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards.
Just so the council is aware, I have spoken to members of our state delegation, and have been informed that this bill is not going anywhere. So, I think we're really just spinning our wheels here on hypotheticals. I mean, there could be a million different iterations of this bill floating around out there, but it's not moving anywhere, according to our state delegation and House leadership.
But it wouldn't hurt us to make a motion, as the solicitor recommended, it'd be on the record, wouldn't hurt anything, so.
Certainly, it certainly wouldn't.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go along with the recommendation of the solicitor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, and I'll do the discussion, because, in effect, there is no corresponding Senate bill. In order for this to get voted on, it has to get submitted to the Senate, have a hearing, and then move, moving along, not for further study, but to move it to the General Assembly. As well as, this one would also have to have another public hearing and a vote to move it to the General Assembly. Being that it's the 12th, I don't think that they can, I don't think they'll entertain a proposal to submit a Senate bill. You have to have both, in order for it to go to the General Assembly to vote.
Madam President, I think that's all well and good, but I think, I like the point that Joe made, that it doesn't hurt to put it out there. We've seen a lot of towns put it out there, and all we're doing is really saying...
Reinforcing.
We're reinforcing, right? And we're just, we're just making a statement that we, and it's, to me, it's just like, we're making a statement that we support the farms.
Right.
So that's why I would, that's why I would say, you know, it doesn't hurt, let's do it.
Madam President.
Just let me make one comment.
No worries.
I was exercising my right to say, my opinion is this, not to, that's my opinion. You have another opinion, that's fine, I'm just stating my opinion, that there is no corresponding Senate bill, and I don't think it's gonna make any difference. So, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. The one final thing I wanted to add, as I think it goes with this, because obviously Counselor Hilton was referencing something that none of us can see, but if we're gonna have items like discussing a specific thing, such as a sub-A for a bill that may or may not exist, if there's a way to include that as backup, I think that would certainly help the cause. And I intend to, you know, not support anything with this.
So, motion's been made and seconded?
May I?
Can I say one thing?
Ms. Steen, Medias.
Tony, when Joe was saying that, you smiled. Is there a corresponding Senate bill?
There isn't.
Okay, that's what you gave a funny look, and that's why...
No, but she's correct.
Okay.
She's correct, there is no corresponding Senate bill, it's actually checked, so.
And the only reason why I said what I said is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see
what happens in our neighboring town, next door, Little Compton, with the, what they're going through. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have some light to stand on, so it doesn't happen here, that's all.
Ms. Hilton?
Yes. So, just to a couple of points. First of all, there's no, been no, and I mentioned this, there's been no formal sub-A introduced. There is a sub-A floating around, but it has not yet been introduced, which is why I didn't include it as backup. But my question was really for the solicitor, which was, does, if a sub-A is introduced, does the resolution that we have now, as it stands, cover that, or do we need something else? You know, I'm not an expert on Rhode Island politics, but I've watched bills like this in the past, and Tony's smiling, and I know why he's smiling, where there are occasional powerful backers, and my understanding is they have engaged a very high-powered law firm in Providence that's lobbying on their behalf. And, you know, while there's no Senate bill introduced yet, it's still within the realm of possibility, and given some of the backers of this particular bill, it's worth paying attention to. And, you know, it may not be the first time that occasionally something comes out of Providence at the 11th hour, at the very end of the legislative session, when we don't have an opportunity to step forward. So, you know, my point in bringing this up is that this would have an incredibly significant impact on potentially 100 properties, never mind the other ones that would all wanna get themselves enrolled in farm properties. And they'd be allowed to have not just agricultural activities, but it, as you read special events, everything's a special event. I mean, you could do any sort of activity you wanted. And that is my reason for wanting to make sure that our legislators, as well as the committee, is aware that our zoning here is our right, it's the municipal's right to, municipalities' right to control its own zoning. It is not for the legislature to, you know, decide how we're going to use our land. Heck, we have enough trouble deciding that without having the General Assembly participating in the discussion.
Hey, Tony, good job.
So, now that we've gone through all that, what's the motion? Can you repeat the motion?
Yeah, the motion was to submit, you know, recommendation of the town, solicitor, two.
Add the section two dash thirty-two dash four of the general laws, who mean as this.
And motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Five to two. Next item, H, bids and requests for proposal, H one, DPW Director William Anderson requests permission to award bid for trash contract fiscal year 1718 to waste management of Foxborough, Mass, for services including weekly manual trash pickup and bi-weekly automated recycling, continued from the May 27, May 22, 2017 meeting. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sorry, tired. All right, counselors, all right, so this was carried over, obviously, from the last meeting. And I just wanna go through, I'd like to just go through it once more, kinda make sure everyone's on the same page. Talk about the recommendation from the landfill subcommittee, I know a few of them were up tonight to voice their opinion. And then, we'll talk, basically, there's three options, I look at it, and I'll spell those out very shortly. So, we received bids for different options. One, to continue manual collection, as we do now, manuals, manual waste, manual recyclables, using the same 15-gallon and 22-gallon bins we have right now. We also received prices to basically go, move tiveterin, as I wanna call it, into the 21st century, try and look at automated services. So we have, we got prices for manual trash plus automated recycling, we got prices for automated trash, automated recycling. We had four vendors. It basically came down to, we have, we, two vendors who are both qualified, there's no issue on either one of them. One vendor was low bidder on the manual trash, manual recycling, as we do it right now, weekly. Another vendor, the other vendor, waste management, was the low bidder on if we decided to move to automated. The issue we had in front of us at the last meeting was, really, it was a budget issue. And this was an issue that I brought to the landfill subcommittee, which at that time, they recommended, could we talk to both vendors and see if they could work a deferred payment option? So I requested, you know, sent it out to both vendors, and both vendors came back with their options for deferred payment to help work with our $525,000 budget for fiscal 18. Even after discussing budget, and when going back to the landfill subcommittee, landfill subcommittee still recommended that we look at going, moving tiveterin to the 21st century and going to bi-weekly automated recycling. Again, a lot of, a few of the, few of the members had wanted to go both. However, my, is from my perspective, you know, being, we only have five months, if we do that, it's, my office is gonna get flooded with phone calls, only because change is not, doesn't go great here, I'm gonna say that. I'd like to do baby steps, I'd like to start out recycling, and then, you know, in three years, we could move to automated on everything, when we have to decide what we're gonna do with our waste anyway. Again, there was some confusion last time about the terms and conditions on the deferred payment. There is no waste management, and their language back to us suggested three payments of $84,000, it's paid in July of every fiscal year after this. If we, at the time of the end of the contract, if there was still landfill life, if we could extend the landfill, and we could make, we could, and the council decided at that time to extend the contract, which is, there is an extension built in for all, they would consider reducing the last payment to $50,000, thereby negating any interest. But if there isn't an extension, it's spelled out, and it will be in the contract, the final contract, or the contract language. MTG disposal, they came back and they gave us their deferred payment, they agreed to hold it, they also agreed to two years of $70,000 payments, they agreed not to take a CPI increase in the second year. Either case, in either, either method we decide to go, it's all over our $525,000. So if the council wishes to stay with, as we do services as we do now, it's $666,000, it was MTG's bid price. With the deferred payment option, they will interwork with us, so you're looking at the same thing in the next fiscal year, plus a $70,000 payment for the first year, and a $70,000 payment for the next year. If we go with, decide to move forward, and we wanna do automated recycling, the biggest issue here is the carts. I'm gonna say this, if we had the carts, if the town purchased the carts, automated recycling and manual collection is actually cheaper than the $666,000. It would be 600 and, hold on, 651, no, if you add in, you gotta add in, add in the options for the pickup at the landfill, 651,320 is, it would be, would be the cost to the town, for just, just the services, not, not including the bins. Again, the issue here is if we decide to go automated recycling, you need the bins in order to do this. Now, at the last meeting, there was arguments, I will bring it up now, there was arguments about, you know, we're gonna see a lot of, how do I wanna say this, we're gonna see a lot of contamination, things like that. I can honestly tell you, in the last seven years of records I've looked at, we've had one load rejected at the landfill. Now, it is manual pickup, I will say that, but we're tiveterin, we're not, we're not Providence, we're not Central Falls, we're not Pawtucket. I just don't think if we give someone a bigger barrel and tell them, everything you put in your green and blue bucket now, now goes in the big barrel, they're gonna start changing that. I don't see that happening. So, there, so the way, I'd like to say, there's three options, I think, that's in front of us. One, we stay with manual trash collection, and then the award would go to MTG disposal. And with, working with their terms on the deferred payment option, that was really option one. Option two, we kinda move forward and go to automate, I'm recommending automated recycling a baby step, not, not going to full, because I think full would be, put us way, I think that's more than we need right now. And option three, which has a caveat, is really, you know, we decide to do neither, I'm just gonna throw it out there, we can do neither, and have everyone in town get their own private hauler and decide to do whatnot, but that jeopardizes our pay-as-you-throw program. We can no longer do that, and we won't have the money to put back into the underfunded account that we have right now. So I'm not really recommending that option, we have 7.1 million right now, we need 9.1 to close. I can shave some of those costs down, doing some internal work, but I can't cut $2 million that, as far as I know, off of that trust fund.
So the first option is the 666 K plus the 70 K, three payments?
Would be two payments of $70,000 to make up for, for working with, for them working with our budget of $525,000.
And the second one is 650 K?
No, it's 742,400. Now, understand that that includes the bins, that includes, that includes the vendor, vendor working with us on the bins. If we don't have the vendor do the bins, and we decide to do it ourselves, but we need the bins, it's 651,000.
The bins are just for recyclables, not the trash.
Correct. There are 96-gallon bins, they're just for recycling.
We don't really have the money to buy the bins.
I know.
And that's three payments of...
If they buy the bins, it's 742,400, it'd be three payments of 84,000. Right.
Three payments. And how long are the contracts for?
Three, it's three years tied to the life of the landfill, the license of the landfill, yes.
Okay, you're committed to the three years, wherever, whichever way we go, we're committed to three years.
We're committed to three years, and then we have, we have another three-year renewal in one-year increments, should something change with the landfill or something happen, correct.
Okay.
Does the solicitor look over the contract?
I've talked to, oh, go ahead, Tony, sorry.
Whatever you do tonight...
Whatever you do tonight, I'm just going to ask you to make it subject to review because these contracts haven't been completely drafted yet. So, I just ask for the opportunity, whatever the vote is, to review, to make sure that it's legally acceptable.
And how about Paul, has the administrator had a chance to look over any of this at all?
Not the contract specifically, but Director Anderson and I had a long conversation about this, and I have to admit that when I first heard this, the concept, when I was sitting here two weeks ago as a spectator, it seemed like it was a hard choice to make. But I think at this point, what the director is recommending, and which I concur with, is that we go with a Waste Management contract.
We're in the wrong business, we should be in trash instead of, we have money in trash.
Ms. DeMeades?
Yeah, this is just my opinion, and I don't like my opinion that much, but it's my opinion. And I'll tell you why, I think we should enter the 21st century, but I'm hesitant to think of whether or not we can afford that at this point with the tight budgets that we've been having, and the future of our budgeting that we don't know is, I would love to go into the 21st century, but in light of the last budget season and everything that's been going on, I'm hesitant to spend that much money, and that's just my opinion. And like I told you, I don't particularly like my opinion, but it's just something that I feel.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I'd just like to remind the council that in the middle of the budget process, when we were at the high school auditorium, members of the Budget Committee did stand up and did indicate that they intended to make sure curbside pickup was something that would not go away. I think regardless of whatever we decide here today, they will fund the money in future budget years. And I'm inclined to enter the 21st century and put us in a position where, when we do go fully automated trash at some point down the road, we're not eating the full bill for both trash and recycling carts at that time. It, it makes the most sense.
He just brought up something that I just thought of, if we do go in the future, these bins aren't going to last forever, they have to be replaced at some point because...
Ten-year warranty.
Um, I'm just going, there's a ten-year warranty, I've had my bin in East Greenwich for over 15 years now.
It's just a question.
And it still looks like it, it looks like brand new, like it's, because again, it's not being thrown like our current bins.
I do have to say, John is right, the Budget Committee will support trash, I just think they, I just think, I'm just hesitant to spend this much money at this point, but that's just my opinion.
Is there any chance that we can get the residents to buy their own bins?
No chance.
And let's save that money? Why not?
Because, because if, if you have to, and we talked about this at length at the recycling meeting, but in other communities, and Newport is most recently one that comes to mind, if you require the residents to go out and spend the $40 to buy their bin, people are not going to, some people are not going to do it. And that's going to impair their ability, because the only way for recycling to be picked up with the automated system is to have the correct bin, so it can actually lift it up and dump it. And my concern is that, you know, I'll use my neighbors as an example, they're, you know, they're elderly, and I don't see too much of them, and if they don't know that they have to go out and purchase this bin, they just might put their recycling out, as, as always happened, and maybe it just doesn't get picked up. And, you know, those are the people we have to look out for.
Ms. Hilton?
So, again, this is my opinion, and, and, you know...
Speak into the mic, please.
Thank you. And as much as I would like to say we should go to automated pickup, and I really tried to get there because I really wanted to get there, because I understand where Bill's going with this, and he's done a tremendous amount of work, and he went back to the vendors and asked them to work with us, and he's done all this. In the end, you know, my concern is that we might be a step ahead of where we should be. If we go with, if we go with, if we go with automated recycling, you know, it's going to push our trash cost ultimately, although they've said they'll work with us on the first year, you know, ultimately, with the payback, the year after that, we're looking at, you know, $826,000 for trash. We're almost at $1 million for trash pickup, and we really don't know what it's going to cost us when we get to, you know, having to close the lands bill. We don't know what the tipping fees will be in Johnston. And so, there's a, a part of me that says, for this last three years, before we have to close the landfill, that maybe the, the safest, easiest thing to do is to stay with what we have, which is, you know, going to cost us $666,000 a year, and incorporate, figure out what to do about the bins, and figure out how to do that at the time that we close the landfill and go to Johnston. We talked as a council a few months ago, a while ago, about trash pickup and, and other options that, you know, in some towns where there's a surcharge to be in the tax program, in the trash program. And, you know, given what it's going to cost us when we go to Johnston, we might have to look at something like that. And, you know, maybe it would be easier and more palatable for, for folks, you know, to have some time to come to terms with the fact that the landfill's closing, we are going to go to this recycling thing, we're, we're not going to be able to fund trash indefinitely at, you know, 800, and then potentially, depending on the tipping fees, a million dollars a year unless we figure out a different way to do it. So, you know, I am most comfortable sticking with, for now, the system that we have, going with mega disposal, they'll work with us on the budget next year, but really get ourselves in gear, and it will, I think, take this long to convince probably the population that we need to do something differently, and spend time getting everybody ready to move to this, to, you know, automated pickup for everything maybe, and how exactly we're going to fund, you know, the trash program in tibetan, which is, I think, very important to people, and we want to keep it.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau.
Once we start going to Johnston, if we just stay with the bag program and not do away with it because the dump is capped, that will cover the tipping fees. So, I, we shouldn't go up any, according to the numbers and the tonnage that we bring.
We shouldn't what? I didn't hear.
We don't do away with the bag program, just keep the bag program going and take that money, and that'll transfer, instead of putting it into that fund, that'll take care of all the tipping fees, maybe even a little more. So, we don't have to really worry about that right now, because that, I think, I think that will cover, if I'm, am I wrong?
We do about, we do about 2,000 tons a year, actually probably a little bit more. We're, we're almost at a 50/50 rate with recycling and waste. That's based on, on a limited study I did when I first started with the waste, because we don't weigh things. But right, right, we're about 50/50% right now, we, we actually recycle very well. So, 2,000's at, by the time we go out, it's probably going to be more in the range of 70 or higher, the tipping rate at Johnston, so.
Madam President. Ms. Ryan?
I, I also, I mean, I'm going to echo the same kind of stuff, the biggest thing for me, and I appreciate all the stuff that you've been doing, I appreciate all of this, but the biggest thing for me is the budget, the budget, the budget. And it was just like, it was so horrendous going through this past budget process, I would say again about the planning, and it's like, and I know you have been planning. But, you know, I don't see this, I see that, that we will go to automated, but I see if we can hold off for two years to save a little bit of money so that we can get into, we can be in a bit better shape. And I don't like, I don't like doing that, I, but at the same time, it's like, it's a very, very practical thing, if you're building a house, you're doing something in your house, and it's like you can't afford it. And it's just like, you can't afford it, so it's like we're going to have to wait till next year. And I, you know, I feel bad about saying that, especially because I know you have, so many times, your account has, counts have been raided. I feel, I feel bad about, I'd love to give you something, but, but I'm just hoping that people can understand if we can wait for a year or two and get, get planning and get back in balance again. And I think that's going to happen. So, that's, that's where I come down. Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson?
If I could add just one thing about, and I just, because this is, again, when I see people coming into DPW who are all upset about the bins and what the small ones they have and everything else, they all want new bins. When they see that we still only have the 22 gallon and they see the, the samples, they want the new bin. They, they, and they, and I'll tell you that 99% of them were willing to pay for that new bin that come into DPW. So, you know, I, again, I'm just throwing that as an option, I just don't know what the whole town would be, but, but they want the new bin, they want to see the new bin, and, and that's what I get at my office right now.
Madam President.
In, in fact, I actually have two bins because the one is too small.
You threw so much trash.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, I had a question for Bill. Is this a three-year contract, a one-year contract?
This is a three and a half year contract, starting July 1.
So, would it be possible if we went one year with the 666, and then renegotiated next year so we could put it in the budget for the automated? Because when we go to budget hearings next year, maybe we could put that into the budget to go to the automated. Would they be willing to open the contract to do that?
If I can add, I don't think that's possible, only because right now we have two vendors. MT, you know, mega is the low bidder on, on the, on the manual as we do it right now, waste is the low bidder on everything else. I mean, if we went to, right now, and they're on their bid here, if we go to automated, we know, with the bins, it's 838,000 on, on their end, on mega's end. That was their bid price. So, you know, it's, it's higher. So, I mean, that's, that's what I mean, it'll cost you more, I mean, yes, can you negotiate? But I don't know if it's even allowed. That's, that's, I'll, I'll leave that to the solicitor.
Well, I was just wondering if we stayed what we had for this year, and then next year when we sit down and present our budget, we could allot for the automated.
If you look at the chart, even the cost of the recycling carts, mega is 138,000 versus Waste Management is 95,000. And their cost, again, is 700,000 versus 650,000. So, you know, it, it's cheaper on one thing, manual, and we certainly do get complaints about this manual pickup.
But I was just trying to, I was just trying to come up with a way that we could...
As they throw it along the bins.
I was just trying to see if we could come up a way to get into the 21st century next year rather than this year when we don't have the money. Maybe next year we could put it in the budget.
So, it may be possible, but it's probably going to cost us more, is the answer, based upon this chart and what they, they proposed as, as their bid. So, certainly, Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I just was going to say one more thing. You know, I know there's a lot of consternation about the budget process that we just went through and what came out of the Budget Committee and the number that came out of the Budget Committee, but as we sit here as a council, it should not be incumbent upon us that the Budget Committee went out and did their department visits, and they dug into all the different numbers, and they still ended up taking as gospel the word of our prior town administrator on what this contract would cost. It is not our fault that they didn't do their job, and we should not sit here and count out of them. With all due respect, Councilor DeMeades, but you're, I know you're afraid of what's going to happen with the budget process, they stood in front of us, they said they would pay for the pickup. So, let's buy the bins, let's move into the 21st century, and let's get on with our lives.
I'd just like to say one thing, you can blame the Budget Committee for not realizing the numbers were right, but the town council had some responsibility in that too. And we heard the same numbers the Budget Committee did, and we didn't point out that the numbers were right. We are not trash people, none of us worked for trash companies. We took for granted, well, the numbers that were given to us should have been the right numbers. They weren't, but I don't think anybody should be responsible for not noticing that, including us.
We, we, we took the word of our department head to give us the right information.
Right.
If he didn't, that's not our fault, we...
And it's not anyone's fault, it's, it's not Bill's fault, it's not the Budget Committee's fault, it's not our fault.
You know, I did say, when, when I first came on, that that was one of the numbers I had issue with, that we should at least be at the level we're funding now or higher, so it's, it's just in case, you never know what's going to happen.
I think we all should take responsibility for not noticing, but I don't really think it's our responsibility.
No, but I think our administrator had given us those figures, so we took his word for it. So, it wasn't our fault.
Ms. McReeve?
This might be math that you, you can't quite do quickly, but can, can you outline by the, the two different options, what's the unfunded piece that we have to deal with this year?
I had it in front of me, hold on a sec. It's in my...
525 is budgeted, correct?
Correct.
It's 525, so it's 100 and, it's 100 and...
Yeah, yeah, I apologize for the...
That's all right.
Putting you on the spot.
So, there'll be an unbudgeted?
So, if, if we go to the automated, it's 217,400, it's 141,000, I believe, on the other side.
So, that would be, but that's not unbudgeted, but we're going to put that into other payments.
Sorry, I, say that one more...
What are we paying everybody next year? How are we doing?
520, everyone, both, both firms agreed, if 525, they're going to work with our number.
So, it's all budgeted.
But the, the difference between the current price and the, and both is 141 compared to 217, I think that's, 217,400.
Thank you.
For one, that's the difference.
That's the difference for this year, for this year's budget, for the 218.
That's the amount that we have to make up.
Right.
In years two and three.
Correct.
And if I may, just add the perspective, that's the number that through the departmental budget, in this case DPW's department budget, through council, through the Budget Committee is what we have to fight for. This year, because of the contractors being willing to work with us, we can, you know, we can make this motion forward.
We can make this, we, we, we can, we can make it work, but it does mean a pretty, it's a pretty stiff increase the year after that, in years two and three.
Right, Bill, because we're making up this tibetan increase, it's also price-wise.
Well, right, the, the price would, because the right to, the vendors have a right to ask for the CPI increase for, for the, for the contract, though, though MT, I will say that, that mega, this, you know, they said they would not increase it by, by the agreement for next year, but the third year, they, they did include something, right?
So, it's more than that.
So...
So, but again, I'd just like to say that, so the real difference in, in the big numbers here is really the cost of these bins. That's what's driving this whole thing, I believe. That's what's thrown in, in my mind, that's what's skewing the prices so that, you know, it's making it look really higher than it is. And unfortunately, you need the bins to run the automated, so I don't know, you know, it's tough.
May I ask a question? The bins are universal, right? Between vendors?
Different companies make, different prices, different companies, but they're, they're roughly the same size, 95 gallons.
But are they universal by, for trash pickup vendor? Meaning that, you know, almost...
That is correct.
No, no, Joe's going to go steal bins and borrow them. That's a plan.
Strike that from the record, please.
We'll just steal them from someplace else.
Mr. Perry?
I'll tell Newshack.
Madam President.
The bins are, I'm, I don't mind if I finish, the bins are universal, meaning that, that any vendor can use any of the bins?
Yes.
Right?
If we bought the bins, any vendor would be able to program the machine, and it would, yes, correct.
So, you know, I'll be honest, one of the things that I've heard from a bunch of older constituents is that they don't want the big bins. And they don't, a lot of them don't want the big, the really big bins, they want the bin size, is it 64 gallons?
Yes.
It's the big one we have now.
The big one is 96, the big one we have now is a 64 gallon.
Okay. They don't want the really big bins, they want the 64 gallon bins, because they don't want to, especially, you know, some of the older folks who live in rural areas who have long driveways, they don't want to deal with that. You know, is part of this, you know, is it worth, given that the cost of the bins is, is this, that if we did go, if we stayed with manual for three years, that what we figure out a way between now and three years is how to fund these bins without having to pay a trash contractor, you know, to provide us the bins, or, you know, and the money that they're making on the bins, and find a way for us to find the bins, get the bins for people, so that at the end of this, you know, we have the bins and we can say, here we go, we, we paid for the bins, we're switching to automated. If that becomes a priority of the council and part of the plan.
Increase the price of the bags, how would you, how would you get that revenue?
I, I mean, I think you'd have to look at it, and, and it's possible, it is possible, that while people may not want to fund all of the bins, you may say to people, look, we'll try and raise half the money for the bin, and you as a consumer, if we're going to go to this, you know, we, can you pay, you know, pay for half of it, or they're, I go to this, you know, can you pay, you know, pay for half of it, or there... I mean, I think there are, I think there are ways to approach this in terms of securing the bins that may be doable over a longer period of time, if we have some time to do it.
Madam President?
Hi, you?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the award of the weekly, or the trash contract fiscal year 1718 to Waste Management, Foxborough, Mass., including services for weekly manual trash pickup and biweekly automated recycling. And I'm going to do so in support of our department head and what our town administrator said.
Subject to legal review.
Subject to legal review.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. LeBeau?
If we do this this year, at $3.33 per week, we'll pay for the bins on the following budget. We, yeah, I just did the math, yeah. It's $3.33 a week. Per household, we'll pay for the, per household, we'll pay for the bins. We do the deal, and unfortunately, the Budget Committee is going to have to fine $3.33 next year, and that'll pay the bins off.
Um...
Per household, per week.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying, so we go for our department head, the administrator, John, I second it. We'll find the $3 per house. Next year, we won't buy one scratch ticket.
And not to mention the landfill recycling committee, this was their recommendation as well.
Right. So, we have the recycling committee, who is really most familiar with this particular process. We have the director of DPW also in favor of automated recycling. It comes down to a policy decision of the Town Council as to whether we agree and will proceed with automated recycling, again, upon the recommendation of the people who know. Now, as far as, certainly, to make a policy decision, we need to consider budget in the process. And certainly, this year, we are definitely under budget on trash pickup. And have, the DPW director has, Mr. Anderson, has successfully negotiated a solution to that situation. And in effect, either option, we'll be paying the same price this year and paying a different price next year, based upon what option we take. Certainly, next year's option would be 742 with the $84,000 payment going forward versus 730,000. So, what does that work out? Seven, eight, 26,000 versus 700. So, you're talking 100K difference, right? Am my numbers correct?
Sorry, say that one more time. You said, no.
So, I'm just thinking of next year. I'm thinking of next year.
Oh, so next year, yes.
Not fiscal year...
19, you're figuring. Fiscal year 19.
Fiscal year 18, 19.
The budget process that we will start this fall.
Correct. Would be the first option with MEGA is, would be 660 plus 70K, which is 730K. And the option with Waste Management would be 742?
Four, yep.
Plus the 84.
Plus the 84. So, that is 600, I mean, 826. So, we're basically talking about $94,000 difference between one option and the other. And by fiscal year 18, 19, we should have the casino online, and our revenue line would increase. So, if your revenue line increases, that also impacts your budget line. You can increase your budget because you'll have more revenue. So, I think the logical choice is to move forward with the recommendation of the landfill committee and our DPW director for 100K difference from one option to the other.
I just want some clarification. The 666 is not for the automated recycling?
Correct. That's the manual.
That's what I just want, okay.
So, that's the difference between manual versus automated recycling. You're talking about 100K difference in fiscal year 19, 18, 19.
In both contracts, both companies, there's a three-year contract.
Mm-hmm. Three-year.
And it's 12 cents a day to have a bin paid for next year.
I thought you said three and a half.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
No, I didn't math right.
No, no, not you. No, no. I thought you said three and a half. One was a three and a half year.
Well, come on. 12 cents.
The bins are 300...
No, no, the contract. I thought one of them was...
Well, it's going to start July 1st, and then it's tied to the landfill license, which is December of 2020.
Yeah, yeah.
So, at the end of the contract, it's a $300,000 difference.
No, it's 300, it's roughly 290 for the bins, plus the difference...
No, no, but what I'm saying is the difference between the two vendors over the three years is it's $300,000 difference over three years. If it's about $100,000 a year difference, it's a $300,000 difference over three years.
It's roughly the bins, yes.
A final perspective for the budget process. Unlike this year in the budget process, where you didn't know, you had a poorly deliberated number that you're dealing with, is you know, whatever choice you go with, you know exactly what the numbers you'll be dealing with for the next two or three budget cycles. And that in itself, we're six months out from the budget cycle, is a good position to be in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Waste Management option. All those in favor?
Okay.
Four opposed?
I had a question.
Motion passes.
Oops.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you to the landfill committee for doing a very good job. H2, Town Clerk, approval to award bid for audit services to the firm of Hague, Sahadi and Company, PC of 126 President Avenue, Fall River, Massachusetts, for 130,500. That's a three-year total for audit services.
Yes, we reviewed these proposals when they were sent in, and it was, my recommendation is that we stay with, or that we award it to Hague, Sahadi. They did the last three years. Now, they were the second lowest bidder. There is a bidder lower from Maine, but they come down, get the information, and bring it back. And I felt that the, when you go through their full proposal, that the number of manpower and the distance between us getting the information, and we have had good success with Hague and Sahadi, that the questions are answered quickly. They come in, they review what needs to be, and they're from Fall River, so they're pretty local. This is for the school and the town. We have one audit firm. So, that's the recommendation I had on this.
Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Make a motion to approve awarding the bid for audit services to the firm Hague, Sahadi and Company, PC of 126 President Avenue, Fall River, Massachusetts, for 130,500, three-year total.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator announcements? Mr. McGreevy?
Yes, I don't think this is necessarily a, well, the announcement is, on behalf of the tax collector and tax assessors, the tax bills went out today. That's not necessarily noteworthy, other than the fact that, given the car tax issue that's working its way through the legislature and by all, by all, until will probably happen, these bills went out with, assuming the current law, which means, under the proposed legislation, we would have the ability to issue credits. Other jurisdictions have done other things, based on their own technology systems and collections and so forth, but based on the recommendation of the collector and the assessor, we went with, stick with the current law and deal with it in the future.
Thank you. That's the best we can do, based upon uncertainty. So, they went out June 12th. So, everybody should be receiving their tax bills shortly. Town Council announcements?
Yes, Madam President. Yes. I'd like to publicly congratulate Captain Joe Plasekka for the EMS Paramedic of the Year for the State of Rhode Island. I attended a ceremony on May the 26th, and he was awarded that award, which was very appreciative of him, and he did a wonderful job. So, I'd like to congratulate him on that. Also, Councilor LeBeau and I attended the graduation of the cadets. Three were in the top of their class, and I'd like to congratulate them on that. And the other thing I have was directed towards the clerk about the beach fees, about coming up with revisiting the beach fees for the upcoming season.
Right. So, I now have, the DPW director has given me a listing of fees that he would like addressed, and the planning board has given me some last Friday that I got from there. The beach fees need to be addressed, too, for the, especially the non-resident ones. So, if the council wants to schedule, let me go ahead and advertise the fee resolution and just fit it into a council meeting where I can. That's okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Just scheduling, you can approve that. That's fine.
Anything else?
And also, at that time, we will discuss on the issue at Grinnell's Beach about being open or being closed, because that's a liability for the town. So, we have to address that at the same time. So, I'll make that a motion that we...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a motion.
Okay, fine.
Too many motions. I'm getting sensitive.
Any other...
We don't need money, so I'll make a motion.
I have.
Ms. Hilton?
Two things. One, and Bill is back there, work is going to start on Grinnell's Beach at the end of this week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I have Dick Stady Clarence. I will start. I plan on closing the parking area by, before the end of the, end of the week.
Yes.
And start.
So, it's very exciting that the work is going to get started, but it is probably going to cause a little disruption, because the beach, the parking lot will be closed, and we do need to get the proper signage down there. And I spoke with Chief Blakie today, because once the parking lot gets closed, there will still be foot access to the beach, and that means that people who are looking to park may end up parking in various neighborhoods. So, I did speak with Chief about the parking sticker program, which the stickers are ready, and he's got a plan to get the information out to people in case we have people parking on the side road. So, just a heads up that the beach work is underway. The second part of the beach thing is that we've been really busy with our private fundraising, and we've raised about $25,000 so far. But we've just had two very generous anonymous donors offer to do matches up to $5,000 each. So, if we can raise another $10,000 in small donations, we'll have another $10,000 to match. So, get the word out. Donations of all sizes are welcome and appreciated. There are forms available at a number of places, including the treasurer's office, but we should maybe give some to Nancy, so she has them in the clerk's office, and there are various shops around town and on the Facebook page. But if you love Grinnell's Beach and you've been meaning to contribute, now is the time. And the last thing I would like to say is, since Paul is with us officially, as in his capacity, I would just like to thank Madam, Mrs. Clerk, who's worn all these hats for a while now and done it patiently and graciously, and she's yet to kill any one of us, which is probably a miracle. So, I'd like to thank Nancy for all her work as interim. Enormously appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Tony's making a donation.
Tony's making a donation, okay. Any other?
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I was, just wanted to congratulate the high school girls softball team for finishing second place. So, there's that. And then, one question for Counselor Hilton. What is this, this car sticker program you're speaking of?
There's a preset in our ordinances already, no parking zone on a number. The streets that are across from Grinnell's Beach, which we should put into effect a while ago, when people from out of town would come and park there. So, it's posted no parking from May till October, but if you're a resident, you can get resident parking stickers, so you can park your car on the street, you won't get ticketed. And Chief Blakie is, the stickers are ready. He was talking about sending out a code red announcement to the neighbors in the area, putting it on the website, so that once Bill closes the beach parking lot, if we find that there are people coming and clogging up those neighborhoods and using it as beach parking, that the police department will enforce the resident parking sticker only program.
Right.
But it already exists.
So, Mini Newport.
In that neighborhood.
Woo-hoo!
It's been like that for years. I used to live in Stone Ridge, and it was like, 10 years, yeah, 10 years ago it was there.
Residents used to get upset, because they had no place to park.
I used to pay the ticket. It was easier.
It was cheaper. I have just two items. I just want to follow up on the planner, administrative officer advertisement.
It's out.
That's out?
And it is sent, yes, it's in Wednesday's Providence Journal and Newport Paper, and it's come at Times, and it's on the APA, is that what it is?
Yes.
APA, yeah, well, I sent it to her to get it on their website in addition, too.
Very good. Thank you for that update. And I just wanted to ask the council, I was talking to the new town administrator, and we were talking about goal setting. We need to establish goals for the council for the coming year and a half. And Paul has been gracious enough to volunteer to facilitate a goal-setting session. So, we thank the, thank Paul for offering, and we would like to have a special meeting, to schedule a special meeting to set goals for the coming year and a half, and also maybe do some refresher on some OMA stuff that we may need to do. So, I'd like to schedule a special meeting in the next month or so. I'll look to Nancy to come up with some dates and to poll the council for a date for this goal-setting session, because I know that Town Hall is a busy place. Town Clerk, items and announcements, update on Charter Review Commission, special election?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody, this is going forward. All seven districts have to be open. The state is requiring that we open all seven districts, a polling location. They have, however, given us a waiver to, because Pecassett School is unavailable to us, they have extended education there in the summer for special needs. So, they gave us a waiver to put both 3301 and 3302 districts in the VFW, but they have to remain separate districts in there. And we will be using 3307 and 6 at the high school, as we did for the presidential election, separate, but both in the same location. We'll be using Country View, Sandy Woods, Ranger School, and the high school and the VFW.
And the middle school?
No, no. It's not, we had a problem with handicap accessibility there. So, it's just to let you know that's going on, and we're moving forward that. I've had a lot of phone calls about why we're doing it in July. We're doing it because I don't set the July 18 date, the state did. We, I said what we needed, what we wanted. But they, they're not realizing it's a year of the committee and council public hearings on all their recommendations. And when it's a review of the whole charter, that is going to take a few public hearings, possibly take a few public hearings. So, that's all at this time I have on that. But I do have one other announcement. Raymond Dislorius is a scout master of 4218 in Tivon, and he's... and he is gonna be doing a flag retirement ceremony on June 14th, this Wednesday night, at the Town Hall, he'll, he's, as I understand it, when I spoke to him, he's gonna be bringing a fire pit, because it is in honor, they take the flags from the Pecassett Cemetery, and so it's like a burning ceremony. This year, they're doing it for the Tiverton's finest and bravest men and women, the first responders. So I believe the fire chief is sending someone, or, and I'm pretty sure the police chief is as well. So that's gonna be at 6 o'clock, right here outside, and they're gonna have a small reception in here. So that's just to let everybody know that. He's been doing it back and forth with emails, but I have spoken.
As long as he's gonna burn him, that's on the body.
Well, I figure the fire department's gonna be, it's a problem.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Closed executive session, Mr. Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session, Solicitor Litigation 4246-5A2, Tiverton Police Department, Lieutenant Pennell.
Do I have a second?
Second, yes.
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 Yes, and continuing in closed executive session, Solicitor 4246-5A2, Distribution of Litigation Quarterly Report.
Second, do I have a second?
Yes.
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 Yes, and continuing in closed executive session, Solicitor Litigation 4246-5A2, General Otto et al. v. Tiverton et al., NC 20170026.
Second, yes.
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 Yes, and continuing in closed executive session, Counselor Shabbat 4246-5A2, Litigation Four Corners.
Second, yes.
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 Yes, and continuing in closed executive session, Town Administrator 4246-5A1, Personnel, Distribution of Performance Evaluation, Administrative Assistant, notice given.
Second, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and continuing in closed executive session, Town Administrator 4246-5A1, Personnel, Distribution of Performance Evaluation, Fire Chief, notice given.
Second, yes.
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 We are now in closed executive session.
Thank God.
This is going faster than I thought it would.